Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the January Board of Education meeting. Fortunately, we have some pretty decent weather. It's been awfully cold and we've got some cold weather coming up this weekend, but I'd like to welcome all of you. Board, you've had the agenda for a few days now. Is there any additions, changes, or...
Mr. President, the agenda would stand as presented.
I make a motion, we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Luttrell and a second by Mr. Dotson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda is review the minutes from the previous meeting. Any comments or questions?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. McFetridge and a second by Mrs. Cook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is a time at the meeting where we invite any patron to the podium. If they have any comments, questions, or concerns, you can bring those to our attention. Just ask that you state your name and your comment or concern. Just understand the board cannot take any action on it tonight, but we will consider your concern for future meetings. No patrons tonight. Dr. Rollins, I'll turn the agenda over to you.
It's a real pleasure for me to recognize our Springdale High School student body representative, and after I have introduced him to our board and to the audience, he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Zach, if you'd please stand and let us recognize you. This is Zach Baines, again, our student representative from Springdale High School. He is a senior this year. He is currently enrolled in a number of advanced placement courses, and I was speaking with him earlier and telling him how very proud all of us are that he's making these kind of decisions and preparing himself for a great future. But he's taking AP Computer Science, AP Language and Composition, Advanced Placement Calculus BC. He previously completed the Advanced Placement Literature and Composition. He's also taking ASPC Calculus BC. You're gonna have to help us with that, I think. AP Chemistry and AP US History. He's also distinguished himself as a member of the Springdale High School swim team and the SHS choir. He has been accepted at Stanford University next year with, quote, "close to a full scholarship." These are the comments, Zach, of your principal, and when Mr. Jinks says something like this about one of his students, I hope you will appreciate it, as we all do. He's an excellent representative of the wonderful students that we have at Springdale High School. And again, coming from Mr. Jinks, that's pretty special. Welcome, Zach. We're glad to have you. Would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance...
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Zach, if you'd like to stay and address the board for just a minute, I know they would welcome your comments.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins. I really don't know what else to say. Academics are kind of something that I've leaned on for a while, as well as choral music and swim. Swim was kind of something I joined in ninth grade, choral music something in eighth grade with my choir director, Ms. Cornett. And I've just decided to continue that through high school. Taking those AP classes was kind of something that I felt weren't necessarily an option, more of a necessity, considering the benefits that I've had from them and the success that I found in them. I, senior year, I took one less than I did last year, but it really hasn't really been a break. Through the courses that I was taking, I also decided to take debate. Through that, I've done mock trial. I'm going to, I'm writing a speech, well, have written a speech for the Rotary four-way test for the Rotary Club, and I'm participating in debate tournaments. I also decided that I was gonna join in programming competitions. I did R-Region for choir, and I'm going to continue on to all-state auditions this winter. I might do DECA. There's a lot, actually. We have swim, we have swim state competitions coming up, which hopefully I qualify for. We have swim meets, actually two by the end of this week. It's more just kind of something, keeping myself busy for a while now. I actually just came out of, I just became an independent, turned 18 in November, and I moved out of my home. It wasn't necessarily an environment that fostered opportunity, but have been provided help by the community, which has really, really helped me, especially at Springdale High School. I have Mr. Jinks, Ms. Anique Downing, who's not, I don't believe is here right now, and then also Ms. Tracy Reed at the high school, who's really helped me out, and Ms. Lindsay Simpson, who's kind of been there to support me, who's also been my calculus teacher for two years. But Springdale High School's really helped me foster myself some opportunities and has led me to where I am now, getting ready to go to Stanford University, so.
You gonna swim at Stanford?
I haven't been offered to swim, but I would definitely love to continue the opportunity. I'm not entirely, they have a really great swim team. I'm not sure if my capabilities are up to par.
Might come kick you.
But I'd love to, so.
What do you want to study?
I'm gonna go into computer science. It's just kind of a field that I really enjoy. I kind of jumped both feet in a programming class this year, my senior year, and found it actually to be simpler than I thought it was gonna be, and so it's something that I just found natural, so.
I'm in no way saying you need to, just curious, do you work?
I do. I actually work about thirty hours a week and a half since I was fifteen. I worked at first at Candlewood in South Fayetteville, but last year, last October, I started working at the Jones Center for Families and have been a lifeguard there. I was a lifeguard there for a year and now a head lifeguard there currently.
So what little first time you have worked?
Well, between homework and work and school and activities and things like that, I really, I like spending time, one, with my girlfriend. Her name's Haley Lawson. We've been together for two years now. I am spending time with my friends. At the same time, I also like to spend time, like, reading the news, keeping up with current events, which are interesting right now. And I also like to read, so that's kind of what I spend my time doing.
So you understand what example you presented us here with your student activities, your academics, your work, and your independence. It's extremely rewarding for us to hear someone talk like that and speak of your accomplishments.
I really just, I kind of just see it as being me. I love that you guys are so accepting of it and that you guys see this kind of a good representation, but the whole time I've just been kind of living how I've lived, and I kind of see myself as one of the students at Springdale High School, not necessarily anything more or less.
Certainly a true example of hard work we'll do for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Unby, it's a pleasure now for me to invite Dr. Martha Dotson to the microphone. She has a very special recognition to make this evening. Dr. Dotson, thank you.
Thank you, Board, and Dr. Rollins, for allowing me an opportunity to, thank you. I knew it was a new microphone, though, to have Mr. Jonathan Buchanan recognized tonight. Mr. Buchanan has been recognized as the Arkansas Assistant Principal of the Year for the Middle Level. Mr. Buchanan is just integral to the work that we do at Sonora Middle School, and I know that the Board, and I know that you know, the amazing, tremendous leadership that we have in Springdale, and Mr. Buchanan is just a tribute to that. Mr. Buchanan, some of the things that have helped him serve our students in our community has been through, like, our Man Up program. He has worked with our SRO to facilitate and bring up a group of young men that are at risk, to work with them, for character development. They do a lot of outside activities with those students outside of the regular scope of the school day, and being an administrator is very demanding of your time, and he spends a lot of time outside, working with our students, and just even during the day, working with them, and that's one of the things that really helped him be a huge standout across the state to help him be awarded this because of that. Just the day-to-day, I couldn't ask for a better person to work with, somebody that just always has our students' best interests at heart, that I know that can handle the day-to-day and the demanding pressures of things, and just celebrate our kids, and that's just the best thing. And he's been at Sonora since Sonora opened, and so I am so very proud of Mr. Buchanan for being named this.
I really appreciate the kind words. It's hard to follow you up on that, but it, the award itself is great, and I was very, very humbled and appreciative of the fact I've been recognized, but it is, it is a reflection of the great leadership we have in the district and just the conditions that are set forth by the district administrators, the school board. We have so many great teachers, so many great students, so, you know, it really does set, it sets the table, it sets the stage to really want to push yourself, to do everything you can, to try to extend the opportunities for all these kids. And so, you know, they motivate me, and to me, it's fun, and we have a great time every single day. It's challenging, but again, it's something that I really am passionate about, and that's what makes it easy. You find something you're passionate about that you love to do, that motivates you, and then, you know, everything kind of takes care of itself, but I really do appreciate the attention that you guys have given me for the award, but like I said, it wouldn't have taken place if I didn't have Dr. Dotson, even Mr. House, and all of our great teachers. It's just such a great leadership team, our district administrative staff, and I am very humbled and appreciative, so thank you.
Any other questions?
I was curious, how surprised were you? I didn't get to be there.
I was pretty surprised. I was telling everybody that my, my wife had, she was off that day, obviously, but the night before, she laid a bunch of clothes out on the bed, and she said, "You're gonna wear this tomorrow." And I was like, "No, I'm not wearing that." And I was like, "Why?" And she said, "Well, you'll just look really nice in that, better than usual." And I'm not kidding, I was like, "Okay, well, I'm not wearing that." And so, we started to kind of go back and forth about it. Well, finally, I just told her, "Hey, you know, if it's gonna make you happy, then I am gonna wear that." And then I started to drive to work, and we have a Friday morning assembly once a month to recognize students that have really, you know, kind of demonstrated the characteristics that we want to see with our kids. And so, we had everybody in there, and I started to think, "Well, maybe I did get the award on the way in, and everybody's gonna be in there." Well, then we got in there, and we had the assembly, and nothing happened, and I'm walking back to my office, and I'm like, "She just wanted to play dress up or something, I don't know." So at that point, I really didn't think that I'd gotten it, and then they got me out of the building, and I was very surprised. When I walked down to the cafeteria, I started to figure out what was going on, but yeah, it was a great surprise, it just made for a great weekend and an experience I really, I'll never forget, so it was very, it was awesome.
Okay, I have to know, how did your mother react?
She, they kept the secret for two weeks, and I'm surprised that they kept the secret, but they did, but she was, she was very proud. It was, it was a really, it was a fun thing, and then she had a bunch of people over at her house afterwards, and we were able to talk about it, and she was, you know, obviously, she was very, very excited about it, too, so it made it even better.
Well, thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
You look nice tonight, too.
Board, the next item on our agenda is our focus session for the evening, and I know the Board is very aware of the work that's going on in our district over time, and I'll talk about that staircase to educational excellence, and I'm hoping now that each of you can repeat the various landings on that stairway, but teach them all. Learning for all, learning together, graduation for all, and then comes the career-ready piece, and that's what we're gonna hear about tonight. Allison Strains, our principal at HARP, is our leader for the session this evening, and Allison, I think we've got a lot of great kids who are gonna help us with this, as well as perhaps staff members, but we're looking forward to this presentation. Thank you for leading.
Thank you for this opportunity. Tonight, we are continuing our journey on the staircase to educational excellence with a focus on career-ready through personalization of learning. You will hear representatives from HARP Elementary, Jones Elementary, George Elementary, J.O. Kelly Middle School, Archer Learning Center, and our Director of Career and Technical Education, Dr. Jo Rollins. Thank you for being a listener and a learner as we take you full circle with 21st century skills. Three Cs plus one K, careers, counseling, character, and kids equals personalization of learning, and we will begin our presentation this evening with HARP Elementary School.
My name is Emily Kachor, and I'm the school counselor at HARP Elementary, and as a school counselor, part of my job is to promote and encourage career development, and one way that I do that at HARP Elementary is to have a career fair. Before the career fair, I like to give my students a career interest inventory, and I try and listen for the careers that are mentioned most frequently, to personalize the career fair for my students' needs. Last year, we had twenty-four participants in my career fair, and I asked that the presenters address why they chose that career, the training and education that they need for their career, and why math and reading are important. So I brought a few HARP HOCs with me this evening to talk about their future careers.
I am Giselle, and I am a future police officer. I want to be a police officer because I, I want to be a police officer to help people make better choices. I have noticed that most police officers are men. I think more women need to be in this profession. It is best to have at least two years of college experience. This is an associate degree. Another option is getting a four-year degree in criminal justice. Police officers also go through the police academy to learn more about physical training, communicating with people, and how to use the gadgets. Math is important to a police officer because if there was a car crash, they would need to measure the distance, the speed, and the position of where the car was facing. Reading is important to a police officer because they need to know the law and will have to read about it. They need to be able to read court documents. There are many ways to help others. This is what I want to do to make a difference. Thank you.
I'm a future zookeeper.
I want to be a zookeeper because I will get to be around so many cool animals. I also want to help save animals that are becoming extinct. If I am going to be a zookeeper, I will need a bachelor's degree in biology or zoology. That means that I'll be in college for four years. Math is important to a zookeeper because they need to measure the food and medicine for each animal. Reading is important, I mean, for each animal to be happy and safe. Reading is important to a zookeeper because they will need to read research articles about animals that may be extinct. Also, they need to be able to read upon how to best care for their animals. Zookeepers not only take care of land animals, but also sea animals. I'm looking forward to my future as a zookeeper. Thank you.
I am Caitlin, and I'm a future plumber. I want to be a plumber because I want to show the world that girls can do what boys can do, because most men are plumbers. If I'm going to be a plumber, I need technical training from a technical school that focuses on plumbing. It will take me four years to become a journeyman. After becoming a journeyman, I can take a test to become a master plumber. Math is important to plumbers because they need to calculate the amount of materials you need for a job and how much it costs. Reading is important to plumbers because you, you need to read the street names, they will also need to be able to read the following directions. A plumber will read, will need to read the list of supplies they need. My dad is a plumber, and I look forward to working with him someday. Thank you for your time.
And I'd like to introduce Melissa Fink, Principal of Jones Elementary.
Well, good evening. We know in elementary school how very important it is to build those soft skills that children need to be successful in the workforce, and we are very blessed at Jones to have one of the most, it's one of the best partnerships with Camp Regal's after-school program, and it's really one that I feel all after-school programs should be modeled after, but I'm gonna let Ms. Gabby tell you about her experiences with Camp Regal and how it's preparing her to be career-ready.
Hello, my name is Gabrielle Bell. I'm going to be a lawyer when I grow up. I'm in fifth grade at Jones Elementary School. I want to share with you my experience with the SOAR program. We do cool things at SOAR. They offer a lot of clubs that many of the students cannot do otherwise. It is very personalized because we get to pick the clubs and activities we do. Some examples include ice skating, ice and crafts, gymnastics, cheer, music, rockets, among many others. One of my favorite clubs was the Cooking Acce's Club. It impacted me because now I eat more healthy things. I also learned how to cook new recipes. My most favorite club was Wonder Women. It taught, it taught the young women of SOAR the meaning of being a woman. I learned that a woman is a woman of service, has wisdom, strength, and confidence, faithfulness, etiquette, and consistency. All of these traits will serve me well someday as I prepare for college and enter the workforce. SOAR meets the needs of students in the program. Many children would not have the opportunity to eat dinner at home because their families cannot afford food. SOAR provides a full hot dinner to each student that attends the program Monday through Friday. SOAR is changing lives in many ways. The program is having a positive impact on attitudes and personalities. In fact, I would not be delivering this speech in front of you tonight if it wasn't for the SOAR program. The SOAR staff taught me about public speaking, and they taught me how to speak up and speak loud. I know these skills are important for me to learn so that I can be a good lawyer. The best part about SOAR is the positive, loving attitudes of the SOAR staff. Ms. Creighton and Ms. Savannah are very encouraging to the children. They talk to us about the importance of getting good jobs and going to college. They don't let our circumstances get in the way of our big dreams. They want to see us all succeed. They encourage us to do our very best by helping us have good character. They have very high expectations for us. The SOAR program has six guiding principles. The principles help us be successful in SOAR, but I also know how important these principles are to my future as I go to college and become employed. The principles are be grateful, be honest, be responsible, be kind, be respectful, be courageous. It's important I learned these principles. They teach us the lessons we need to be successful adults today. Thank you for giving me your time to share this great program that is impacting so many kids in my school. The experience I have at SOAR will help me meet my goal of being, my goal of being a lawyer someday.
Now, I want to introduce you Dr. Annette Freeman and the George Giants.
Good evening, and we are so happy to be here tonight to talk about the kinds of things that we do at George Elementary that lead our children to select their careers. I have with me Atalia Cruz and Kevin Rivas, and they were selected because they are leaders in fifth grade. I know with their careers they have chosen, they're going to be the boss at whatever they do, because they just take charge and they have excellent communication skills, and so they were selected for that, and they're going to share with you what they're going to be when they grow up. This is Atalia.
Hello, my name is Atalia Cruz. I am eleven years old and in the fifth grade. I have an interest in robotics, programming, and I take taekwondo as a hobby. Also, I'm involved in the Engineering Academy, and I can't wait for March, so when we get to go to the University of Arkansas, along with my engineering class. My teacher, Ms. Morris, helped me enjoy, enjoy my learning by making up games, craftivities, as she would call it, and by making it fun and entertaining, I enjoy it, rather than wanting the lesson to be over. When I grow up, I would, I would like to be a robotics engineer and get a full scholarship to the University of Arkansas. The reason I would like to do this is because I have always been fascinated by how things work and how they're programmed, not only that, but because we could build robots that can do things humans cannot, like exploring the ocean and reaching faraway planets, and don't forget the robots at amusement parks. What I'm saying is that robots can help humans do fantastic things, and I want to be part of making those plans that could build these robots and that can do these jobs and do more.
Hello, my name is Kevin Rivas. I'm ten years old and in the fifth grade at George Elementary School. I really like learning about the human body. My sister helps me learn. She's in college studying computers, computer information systems. She helps me learn things, too. She taught me about a website where I can learn about the human body. It shows me all the muscles and all the bones. My sister's husband is in the Marine Corps. I want to footsteps, but because I want to be a surgeon, I need to go to college first. Then, I can join the Army, Navy, or even the Marine Corps and become a battle surgeon. Also, I also want to be like my principal, because she has a doctorate degree. After graduating high school, I want to go to the University of Arkansas and get, to get an education and choose my own job instead of it being chosen for me by someone else. My teacher, Ms. Morris, personalizes learning by making learning fun for me. She chooses, she chooses games, crafts, and activities. She modifies learning in fun ways. To me, Ms. Morris is never boring because of how she makes everything fun for us.
And I'd like to welcome Mrs. Sarah Ford and her J.O. Kelly Knights.
We are the representatives for J.O. Kelly Middle School. My name is Kevin Ruffield. I'm a Kelly Knight and a future nanosystematical engineer. Some things we do at J.O. Kelly to prepare for college and future careers include during advisory in both sixth and seventh grade. We set academic goals and social goals. During student loan conferences, we share these with our parents so that they, too, can support our goals. Throughout the year, we use our testing data to help us identify our strengths and weaknesses. This helps us to focus on how we can best improve in our ways. In seventh grade, we take the career survey. My career survey said that I could be a nanosystematical engineer, a biochemical, civil, biomedical, or mechanical engineer. The really good news is that I was a good match for what I really want to do, which is to be a nanosystematical engineer. Nanosystematical engineers work by making tiny, yet efficient, systems. They're also someone who works with material that is roughly one one-hundred-thousandth the width of a single strand of human hair. The survey tells us what types of jobs, our interests, and personalities would best fit. It tells us what education levels are required and what types of classes we should focus on to achieve that job. This spring, we will have lunch and learns where visitors will be talking to us about their careers. All this helps us to better understand how we can turn our dreams into our realities.
Hello, my name is Haley Person, and I'm a future computer programmer or teacher. Hello, my name is Haley Person, and I'm a future computer programmer or teacher. The things I have been part of at J.O. Kelly to help me prepare for my bright future include the University of Arkansas Talent Search, which is an educational opportunity program. Each month, university counselors come and meet with 88 Kelly Knights. They emphasize person, personal and career development, financial literacy, technology skills, and ACT readiness. Through these workshops, students are prepared for the rigors of higher, higher education. Also, I, along with 65 of my classmates, am honored to be taking the ACT next month as part of the Duke Talent Identification Program. This test will begin my journey to attain scholarships in support of my college career. This program will help us identify our strengths, explore challenges, and celebrate our accomplishments. I am also a part of EAST, a program that empowers students to make a difference in their community by using hardware and software. One of my projects is called Healthy Habits for Life. The goal is to make our school a healthier place by hopefully implementing a share table and teaching our students healthier habits. The other project I'm working on is for a girl named Alyssa who has cerebral palsy. We are developing a brace for her using our 3D printer. This hopefully will make it easier for her to walk. I am also very interested in technology, and I've been given many opportunities to explore this interest. This fall, I was part of a group who went to corporate Walmart and attended a day for Girls Who Code. And I have been part of the U of A Engineering Camp at SHS for three years. This camp provides simulations, robots, and architecture. All of these experiences are helping me decide what I want to do with my career. As we always say at J.O. Kelly, every day, every night, college-bound.
Hopes and dreams backed up with skills are a very powerful thing, and we try to keep that in front of our kids every day. If you would help me welcome Dr. Shawna Lyons from Archer Learning.
As you guys already know, the vision of Archer Learning Center is to be the state's most effective ALE in supporting our students to be valuable contributors to their community and thrive in their post-secondary and career pursuits. So, one of the ways that at Archer, we're gonna begin to personalize career pursuits is through what we're calling the Badging Program. So, in two weeks, we will roll out this idea of a badge program as, in its pilot version. And tonight, I have with me a teacher at Archer. He teaches JAG, which is Jobs for Arkansas Graduates, as well as business courses, Mr. Nick Rhodes.
Hello, excuse me. So, real briefly, I want to tell you about our Archer Career, Career-Ready Badges Program. So, this is a partnership between Springdale Public Schools and a couple of Northwest Arkansas employers. We, we have an agreement with Mercy Health Systems, Multicraft Contractors, and then obviously, Springdale Public Schools. How the program works is that our students that are interested in the program are going to try to accomplish and earn all three of these badges, as you can see here in the pamphlet, diligence, initiative, and respectfulness. And those terms may sound subjective, but we have some very real objective metrics that are gonna measure those, so, is that right? Okay. So, some of the metrics that we're using, like, students have to complete a mock job interview with myself, which is actually filmed, and they'll be evaluated on that in front of their peers, as well as receive a grade from me on that. They have to already graduate with their driver's license, verify the, a social security number, have a resume, completed employment test. And so, basically, what we are offering these employers that have agreed to partner with us is basically pre-scrubbed candidates, and in return, they have guaranteed to interview X amount of our graduates. And so, I think Mercy Health Systems agreed to maybe, to interview at least 30 of our students. And so, they, they understand that it's not an actual job, but it very well could be, but they are guaranteed an opportunity to, to interview at these, with these positions. And so, it provides increased motivation for our students, and I think this particularly serves a need with our students that are going straight into the workforce. Especially, the majority of our kids get to also go to Multicraft on a, on a seminar day and get to, get to tour, so they, they really get excited about that. So, and that's kind of how the, the program works, and we're gonna be kicking that off hopefully with our upcoming graduates, so. And, Ms. Strange?
Thank you, Dr. Lyons, and thank you, Mr. Rhodes. All right. What we're going to do now is bring you full circle, and we have a young lady. As we continue for full circle, what we would like to do is share a brief video clip with you. This is an interview with Stephanie Sandoval, who is a product of the Springdale School System. And what I'd like for you to do, as she shares her learning journey, you will not hear her use the phrase "personalization of learning," but you will hear that phrase defined so perfectly throughout her entire interview, so please sit back and enjoy this with us.
I am Stephanie Sandoval, and I am an electrical engineer. I'm gonna just finish up a couple of classes this semester that I have left, work on my honors thesis, so I can graduate with honors. And then, I, after this, I'm going to graduate school to pursue a PhD in material science. I want to work on battery technology and developing green energy. So, right now, I'm looking at two options. I recently got into the University of Cambridge into their prestigious material science master's program, so considering doing that, and then coming back to the States and finishing my PhD, and/or just going straight into a PhD program here in the States. Got accepted into Georgia Tech, Purdue University, University of Michigan, and I'm still waiting on some other ones, but I really love University of Michigan, I really love Georgia Tech, so if I stay here in the States, I'll probably end up going somewhere there. But, all, you know, material science and battery technology, I hope to be pioneering the next generation of battery materials.
You will.
I think definitely, like, after-school programs definitely helped get me involved in the first place, because without them, I probably would've just, you know, gone to school and gone home. But I definitely think that after-school programs definitely helped keep me, like, exploring new ideas and new options. And then, like, also just Engineering Girl Camp, that's kind of what shaped my career path, so like, different, like, outside-of-school activities really helped put me where I needed to go and really kind of, you know, showed me what career path I would enjoy versus, like, going into college and not knowing what I wanted to do, and, you know, going in and deciding spending some years and money trying to figure out what I wanted to do. I definitely think that stuff really helped me, and then, throughout, like, high school, I think the AP courses that I took also kind of helped get me ready for, like, worst-case scenario classes, which kind of really helped with engineering classes, just like time management, plus like juggling extracurricular activities. I think that kind of, both of those things combined definitely helped get me ready for college.
You have been so wonderful at moving forward but reaching back. Why is that important to you, and why have, why have you continued to do that even as you've been busy with college life? Why is that important?
I think the biggest reason why that's so important to me is because people who gave time to me, like, helped build me to who I am today. Like, I wouldn't have taken the career path if it wasn't for other people, you know, giving their time to me, you know, investing in me, like, through Engineering Girl Camp or, like, extracurricular activities, or, like, robotics, or different things like that. If it wasn't for those people, I wouldn't be where I am today. And I feel it's only right to be able to do that for others. If someone did that for me, I need to be doing that for someone else as well. And I just always want to, like, continue to inspire the next generation, like, you're gonna, they're the next generation of leaders and technological people who will continue to innovate technology, and so, I want to be a part of that. And even if I don't reach all, you know, my career goals, as long as I can, you know, help someone get to where they need to be, I'd be really happy with my life.
You will do both.
Is she not a wonderful representative of the Springdale School District? And I have to say this, it's not in the program, but I'm going to. Zach Bangs fits perfectly into this presentation as a representative of the Springdale School District. My goodness, and talking about giving back and investing in our future, that's what personalization of learning is, and that's what you have seen throughout the evening. We are going to continue now hearing from Dr. Joe Rollins, our Director of Career and Technical Education.
Let's try it that way. I don't think I can beat Stephanie's video, but if you look back over what all of our young men and women have talked about, they started out with awareness, then they went down to executive skill development. You heard about community partners, character, goal-setting, finding milestones along the way through badges, mentorship, involvement. I think I'd continue that with continued training, continued skill development, mentorship, the expansion of community partnerships to help pave the way for students making the next step, but then also integrating those workplace essential skills that we've talked about. You can take that right back to the character conversation. Honesty, integrity, dependability, positive attitude, work ethic, communication, and then the ability to collaborate and work together as a team. All things that you've heard reference to tonight. All of those things, in addition to the skills that they can gain at any of our high schools, any of the academies at Springdale High, any of the houses at Harbor, any of the programs of study at the School of Innovation. They're all set with workforce needs for this region. We've cross-referenced it, we've checked it, the programs in place are in line with what our region needs. If you look at the students who are coming through the pipeline, I think the future's extremely bright for career readiness for our kids. It's an honor to be a part of the presentation, so thank you for letting me.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins, and thank you all so much for giving us this opportunity tonight to share with you. And while we have focused on the career-ready step on our staircase to educational excellence, we have also set the stage for the next step, which is college-ready, and I believe that's coming up at your February board meeting. If you have any questions for us, please write them on the index cards, they're in front of you, and we will be happy to follow up with you. I want to thank you again for your continued support of our learning journey, and thank you to all of our representatives that were a part of this great teamwork tonight. We are Springdale. Thank you.
So, a couple, a couple of comments. I don't know how many we've done now with this focus session, but continue to be impressed with the time and effort that you put into coordinating it, and then all of you principals who took the time to present to us today. Second thing is, you know, when I was in fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth grade, I don't know that I even knew what career, what career meant, so it was very interesting and super enlightening to know that we're down to that level, to the level we go all the way down into elementary. I think that's really exciting. And the third thing is, the parents of the kids that are here tonight, I have trouble speaking in front of a group, so, I know I sound like I'm repeating myself when I say it at every board meeting, but the kids that got up and presented, I mean, you gotta be super proud of how well they did. I know it's time to say, you know, it takes, it takes a lot of effort, but we, we really enjoy it. We're humbled by what transpired here.
Well, I think it was Mr. Buchanan that talked about find your passion, and I, you, Springdale is full of that, you know that, for our kids on behalf of everyone, so thank you for letting us do that.
At the end of the day, with the kids, that's, that's the thought.
We're helping them find their passion.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did great.
Thank you.
Good job. Good job.
We're so proud of you.
Hey, Jeffrey. How are you doing? We're good.
Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you.
Good to see you too. Have a good evening. Did you stand on that? No, I didn't. I didn't, I didn't think you did, but I'm just checking.
Never say I can't clear a room. Like that. Done. Son. Yeah. So, you asked a question. It's 14 focus sessions. We do know how many, we do know how many, yes.
We've done 14 already?
We've done 14. We did last year, and we've done this year. Yeah, which is awesome. But I totally agree, they do. No one. They do a phenomenal job. They do a phenomenal job. Speaking of people who are phenomenal and truly take something and run with it and design something that is just absolutely incredible, I would love for everyone to take a moment and have Ms. Kara Sedbury to come down. Ms. Sedbury?
And, and some of you are standing, but all of you should be standing. If you got to experience the Caroling on the Creek event downtown, which is her baby and her brainchild, and I just want to again give her another round of applause for her work. If you got a chance to experience that, it was absolutely one of the best-feeling events I've ever left with, and it was freezing cold. I mean, that's pretty good, you know? When can you eat ice cream in 20-degree weather? I mean, it was, it was, it was amazing. In addition, I'd like to recognize Mr. Trent Jones, and he has been coerced to come up and, and, and stand in front of you, which he often doesn't like to do. But we had a challenge this year that was given to us by Dr. Rollins. He said, you know, the Caroling on the Creek event is phenomenal. How do we make it better, and how do we showcase more of the things that we're doing in Springdale Schools? And he was dead-on, absolutely right. We had a meeting, and Mr. Jones and I sat down and talked, and his mind goes, and he starts planning, and he's after it, and it turned into a really great opportunity for us to showcase additional programs that we have going on in Springdale Schools, which was great. In addition, Mr. Rick Schaefer also helped with the programming and the, making sure the word got out, but our master of ceremonies is Mr. Kelly Hayes. And so, Mr. Hayes is gonna stand in the doorway, but I have to tell you, he had on gloves, he was decked out, he was ready for it, and he had lots of good names to pronounce, and lots of events that were going on that night, and just the managerial part of her working on her headset, him on his headset. He was also doing a live stream, geo-tagging, lots of things going on, and then Mr. Hayes up front. It was just, I cannot get, give enough kudos to this team and what a great job they did. So, Ms. Sedbury, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Slukem, and thank you for having us here this evening. I'm gonna give you a little background information of how Caroling on the Creek came to be, and then I'll hand it over to Mr. Jones, and he can speak to, to his portion. The entire idea of Caroling on the Creek came about when my fellow choir directors and music teachers were looking for a way to create a public forum. It was actually Ms. Cornet and Mr. Penalto were going back and forth on social media, trying to find a way to find a place for our kids to perform during the holiday season. We wanted to show off the talent of our students here in Springdale. The surrounding cities have these events that they set up during the holidays for schools and organizations, but the city of Springdale did not have anything set up as yet, so we decided to kind of take that idea and roll with it and find a way to provide these same opportunities for our students here in Springdale that were being offered elsewhere in Northwest Arkansas. So, last year, in 2016, we held our first Caroling on the Creek as a way for our students to give back to the community through music, and nine schools were represented. It was a hit, even though it was the coldest day of the year. At the 2017 event, we are so excited to announce that we had 22 Springdale Schools participating through music and the CTE programs combined. We estimate that we had somewhere between 3,500 and 4,000 attendees throughout the course of the night. We are excited to establish school and community partnerships where students and school programs are the focus here in Springdale. Mr. Jones will speak more to our sponsorship component, but I wanted to recognize the downtown partnerships that we fostered through this event, whether that was through the resources they provided, through tables and chairs, or actually a venue for our students to go in and get warm. The Downtown Alliance, Shiloh Museum- The Downtown Alliance, Shiloh Museum, the City of Springdale, First United Methodist Church, the Springdale Fire Department, and Police Department, and First Security Bank. And I'm the one up here in front of you tonight representing our music teachers, but it really did take a village in this instance. There's no way that I could have done that by myself. So, in addition to these wonderful teammates, the music teachers from Springdale, there's no way we could have pulled this off without them. So, everybody was on deck all night long. It was a huge collaborative success, so we're really excited to share that with you. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Board, and thank you, Dr. Rollins, and thank you, Dr. Slokum, for giving us this opportunity. Kara Sedbury is an absolute rock star, but let's give her another round of applause, please. We had 4,000 attendees. As she had mentioned, there was over 20 choral programs that participated. There was over 20 technology and innovative programs such as East, Art, and CTE. This is really cool. We were on all three TV channels, all three of them. Channel 5 did live weather down there, so we were on TV a lot on Channel 5. They also livestreamed us on over, on all of their social media channels, and I calculated that we were on over a dozen social media pages on that day. There was over 20 vendor booths inside of Shiloh Square, and as she alluded to about the Village, it really was extraordinarily awesome to see the system, the machine of Springdale schools. It really kind of gives you guys the perspective of what you run. It's really fascinating. Some particular people we'd like to say thank you to. Obviously, Kara Sedbury for running the festival. Nathan Olson was the one that organized Shiloh Square, and believe me, that was no easy task. We had the wonderful Amanda Thaddean-Ackam, who organized Santos Workshop. Seth Biazzo is over here. He works in the Communications Office. He helped do that. My seat downstairs is being occupied by a gentleman named Dustin Mapes right now, and he also helped us. If you noticed that night on the Springdale School's social media sites, there was a lot of pictures and videos being cut and stuff, that's what Dustin Mapes did, which was really exciting. The livestream was done by Travis Sherman and students. We had six cameras, I believe, some wireless cameras roaming around. It was really awesome. Don Graham provided art. Jason House helped organize East. Kelly Williamson helped organize CTE. Bailey Jones helped organize East. And then there was two gentlemen that did some really amazing, amazing, amazing work. And that was Mr. Stephen Lightfoot right here, and Chris Button. And Stephen Lightfoot is a genius, for those of you who don't know him very well, but all the great sound that you heard, that was all thanks to his engineering. You want to do something really, really amazing and amazingly difficult, try to manage audio. Holy smokes. You think video is difficult to do, try to do audio. So, I'm very appreciative of this team. I'm very humbled that I got to be a part of this team, and I hope, from your perspective, when you look at an event like this, what the machine that you guys run, the culture that you set, the passion that people have discussed, it is prevalent. It is on all levels, and our students are just amazing. So, I am so appreciative for everybody for being able to be a part of this. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, did you have any comments?
I could be here.
I'd like to comment, because I got to go for a while. No, it was pretty cold, but I stayed for, I think, quite a bit of it, and it was magical.
Yes.
It was magical to be there.
Yes.
And like you said, Trent, the sound was beautiful. I mean, you could hear the kids, and it was so pretty. It was just really special being there and seeing the community come together and say, I didn't even realize you did all the booths, so I just figured maybe that was the city doing that. But anyways, it was just so special, and thank you so much, and I hope it's something you can continue to do, even though I know it's, I'm sure, tremendous amount of work. But to see the community to come together like that is so important, and to have the schools associated with that is just so important as well.
To start it, to brainchild it, which is amazing.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So, 22 schools, how many kids?
We had over 4,000 total attendees, so you would, you know, guesstimate that maybe 30% of that was the students? And I'm just guesstimating, just off the top of my head.
It was amazing.
Oh, and Mr. Hayes was a natural.
I know. I know. I know.
I had a very, very small family.
And so, when you say annual event, he can be our annual Master of Ceremonies.
Sorry.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you again. Someone that you're familiar with, who we've gotten to hear from before, is Mr. Jake Beers, who is our Elementary Science TOSA, and he has some exciting news to share with you. I'd also like to, he's got some props for you. He always brings props. Should I move?
Are you?
Yes. Yes, perfect. Perfect. He's going to talk with you about some STEM grants that he's gone forward and gotten. Mr. Beers?
Good evening, Board, Dr. Rollins. You know, as we sat here tonight and we listened to all the kids talk about the careers they want to go into, I couldn't help but listen to engineering, robotics, science, surgery, you know, fields of STEM. And so, you know, in our elementary program, we really try to promote science and STEM through a lot of the curriculum we already have in place. But we had the opportunity this year to partner with the Center for Math and Science Education at the University of Arkansas, C-Mace, and their director Lynn Hare and I worked together to run a grant. And so, that grant is a license plate grant. If you look at the, it's a state, it's a state grant that's funded through the sale of license plates. And so, we were able to actually receive funding for three of our elementary schools. And so, three of our elementary schools, Walker Elementary School, Monitor, and Elmdale, will receive $3,000 each of STEM materials. And so, these are non-consumables, things that kids can use over and over. They'll impact all third, fourth, and fifth-grade students in those buildings. So, for example, fourth-grade students get the chance to design windmills as part of our energy unit. Third-grade students can design their own rubber band racers and look at forces in motion. So, beginning to set their career path early and expose them to a wide variety of science, engineering, technology, and math through STEM. And so, we're just excited to be able to roll these out, something we'll continue to pursue grants to fund other initiatives and buildings. But again, we're excited to be able to announce those grants and partner with the University of Arkansas to provide professional development to our teachers, so. So, thank you. Any questions?
Good job.
What did you bring? Yeah.
Oh, so this one is a, so this one's a windmill, so kids actually design, it's a lift. So, we have a base, and then they get to design different blades, and they use a fan, and they try to raise up different amounts of pennies, so that the better the blade, the better raises this up. And then this one is a rubber band racer, and so this is just the regular stock version. So, kids design this racer, and it drives on the floor, and then they get to redesign, improve, make it better, and so it's just a component that lives within there. So, hopefully, kids will enjoy it for a long time to come, so.
Mr. Beers is going to stay up here with me, and we are going to ask Ms. Fuller if she can come forward, and Ms. Leslie Pittman. And Ms. Fuller is the Director of our Lake Fayetteville Study Center, and she is, has been an integral component about how we have begun to move forward at the Lake Fayetteville Study Center. And two of her cohorts, right-hand and left-hand, are Ms. Pittman, who is the Secondary Science TOSA, and of course, Mr. Beers, who you just heard from. Over to you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Slokum. Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dr. Rollins. Like they said, I'm Brittany Fuller, and I've had the opportunity to serve as the Lake Fayetteville Environmental Study Center instructor for the last two years. The Study Center, which was established in 1973, has given students in both the Springdale and Fayetteville School Districts the unique opportunity to experience nature and learn science in an outdoor classroom setting for the last 45 years. During my time as the instructor at the Study Center, I've had the, we have been able to serve over 3,100 Springdale students just through trips to the center. Currently, we offer trips to fifth-grade, all fifth-grade students in the district. Last year, we offered trips to environmental science classes from both Harbor and Springdale High School. This year, we are transitioning our program, our secondary program, to serve the biology classes from both high schools. So, the fifth-grade trips to our center incorporate Arkansas K-12 science standards into a nature-based curriculum that allows the students to explore topics like, sorry, energy cycling through ecosystems, living and non-living components of the environment, and classification of different plant and animal species. Students during their trip engage in hands-on learning activities, including a lake plankton exploration and nature hike, and a tributary investigation where students catch and collect data on different aquatic organisms. To measure the impact that trips to the Study Center are having on science learning and student comprehension, we developed a pre- and post-trip evaluation for our fifth-grade students. Our data showed in 2016, 2017 school year, that we did a 16.7, or average 16.7 increase in student comprehension, and a average increase of 14.2% for this current school year. In addition, in the 2000, sorry, in the 2016, 2017 school year, we saw an increase of 7% of students that indicated that they were interested in studying nature and learning in an outdoor classroom setting. Our secondary curriculum that's offered during trips to the center aligns with Arkansas K-12 science standards that focus on topics including the impact of invasive species on ecosystems, human impacts on the environment, and using collected field data to support conclusions made about water quality and the potential effect on different geographic regions of the U.S. Now, to extend the reach of the Study Center in offering interactive, nature-based learning to students throughout the district, we have ran a concurrent mobile learning program for the last two years. The mobile learning program, which currently offers second through fifth-grade activities, is an opportunity for schools to request an onsite visit from the Study Center instructor. During the visit, the instructor teaches a one-hour lesson that can then be incorporated into the current science instruction. To date, the mobile learning program has allowed us to serve over 2,000 additional students. All right. And finally, in addition, the Study Center collaborated with Turnbow Elementary this last semester to host a STEM night. Along with 18 community partners, we gave over 200 students and their families an opportunity to engage in hands-on activities that ranged from coding with robots, learning about different types of reptiles and amphibians, making slime, and engineering straw rockets. Using these partnerships that were established with this event, we plan on collaborating with other schools in the district to host future STEM nights. Moving forward, the Lake Fayetteville Environmental Study Center team is excited to continue partnering with schools and community organizations to offer Springdale students innovative, nature-based instruction. I thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions you may have at this point.
It's a great report.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Typically, how many times a year does a seventh grader visit the STEM?
Well, currently, at the center, we only see fifth graders and high school students. So, they will only come at one time, but for instance, through the mobile learn program, I'm able to see fifth-grade classes multiple times throughout the year. So, I could see them anywhere between one to four times.
Do you do any after-school programming?
Not so much this year. Last year, we did work with high school students to prepare them for testing. We did various programs doing that.
I'm very interested to see the emerging plan, even for summer programs, enrichment activities. Would you come back to that again and remind us what, at least what you're considering at this point?
For the upcoming summer? Oh, yes, so this is actually a discussion we had at our last meeting. We are planning the summer of 2018 to offer two sessions of two-day-long programs for rising, I think, third through fourth graders is our focus group. So, they will have two days, where they'll come out to the center for a half-day experiential learning, where we'll use nature-based activities to teach science.
In our history, and it's been really a beautiful history over time, we've had endowments from the National Science Foundation. I hope we can re, you know, reacquaint that organization with the good things you're doing now. I think that's a great opportunity.
That would be a great backing for our center.
Yeah, it'd be fabulous.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
New Zealand, like, oh, my goodness. We were approached and partnered with the Office of Innovative Education and started working some time back on this idea of really harnessing our ideas and potential powers that we have from learning from our partners. And so, before they sit down, I know that you are very familiar with some of these people, but you need to become familiar with all of them. They took a huge risk. I gave them a call. We got a call from the University of Arkansas, and they said, we've funded the grant, and congratulations, this is great. And so, our first, my first thought was, perfect. I said, when do you need the information back? And we had put in the grant specific requirements of how schools would be selected based on specific data points. So, it wasn't just a randomized selections. It was on the front end, very clear on how the evaluation process would be taken. And so, the idea behind the grant was for us to look at different cultures that were available and try to learn from those cultures. And one of the specific populations that they serve is what they refer to as Pacifica, which we refer to as Marshall East students, our Pacific Islanders. And so, our goal was to come back with instructional strategies and tools to be able to implement in our schools here that would directly impact our students in Springdale. So, the people that were brave to go, of course, Dr. Annette Freeman with George Elementary, and Ms. Shelley Pogue, and Ms. Lee Johnson, who is a teacher in the classroom, and also Ms. Jessie Walls, who is also a classroom teacher. So, we're going to start out with a video, and then...
We started with a...
Sorry. Talk to you a little bit more.
We started with a partnership with the University of Arkansas and the Office of Innovative Education, and they came forward with a grant that would allow Springdale educators to go and experience a global learning journey.
The group of people who went, our job was to go and observe schools and look at ways that they're using innovation to drive the learning. So, in New Zealand, they have a big focus on the students creating the curriculum. And so, they have their standards like we do, that the students really own their curriculum.
One of the things that I loved seeing over there was a positive learning community, and so, we always try to have a positive classroom environment, but taking that to the next step and really making sure that students know they're valued.
As soon as children turn five, they start at school, and they started then explicitly teaching the children how to manage themselves and their time, and they also taught them how to follow their interests and learn how to apply their math, science, reading, social studies into an interest area.
Part of the Walton Foundation grant was that we come up with three goals that we would like to implement in our own schools, and some of the things that we want to do is the big culture piece. The students and families were so welcomed there, and their heritages were just integral part of the schools. We love that the voice and choice is so prominent in the schools.
I think for us, as a whole, as a team, I think that we left with the idea of trust, and how do we do that in a different way?
First of all, traveling across the world was amazing, and getting to share with my students things that I learned and saw, like, in New Zealand. But also, as a professional, I saw the way school can be, and we do a lot of great things in Springdale, but we're always looking for ways to make it better.
And so, the group that went together on this journey consisted of several groups. So, as you can see, those are the people who were represented. Springdale School District, Bentonville School District, Rogers, Siloam, Fayetteville, Thaden, and Haas Hall. Those were all the representatives that went on the trip. Each district or private sector was able to select based on the criteria that were outlined by the grant in terms of matriculating the data, if it was available, with the exception of Thaden, because that's a new school that's come on board, so there's no previous data in that particular sense. So, the partnership, as I said, was with OIE and with the U of A. Walton Family Foundation funded it, and several of the Walton Foundation... Walton Family Foundation funded it, and several of the Walton Foundation family board members also attended with us on this journey to go through kind of the process. And the group that led us, that was so kind to us while we were there, was Core Education. They're a reform group that's based out of Australia and out of New Zealand. They have co-offices, and so we've made some great connections with people overseas that we otherwise would have never brushed against and had the opportunity to learn from. So the scope of the project is two years. It began, as I said, in June 2017. It will expire in 2019. However, the work will continue. And you can kind of see the components of, I won't read that to you, but the idea is to begin this dynamic hub, this place where professionals can begin exchanging information. And we've been on the journey of personalization of learning in Springdale for many years, for the last four years, in a really consistent and informed way. But what's next? And how do we get better? And what's the next thing got to look like? How do we look around the corner, and what does that need to look like? And one of those things is a lesson that we can take from what we've seen with the birth of Don Tyson School of Innovation. That whole process and the movement that has come behind that, and the interest and the intrigue and all of that that goes around what that is. I came back, and Dr. Rollins said, "Let me have your report. Like, tell me what it is." And I said, "It is life-changing, and we can do this in Springdale, and we should be doing this for students K-12. It shouldn't be a certain group, age band, whatever you want to call it, who has the opportunity to access this type of learning. It should be open to all students." And there is no philosophy that I think that Dr. Rollins doesn't believe in more than "all means all." And if all really means all, that is the next logical step for us in Springdale. And so, of the three goals that we're going to be talking with you about tonight, it is the beginning of the inception of this incubation period for innovation happening at the elementary level, so that as students onboard into our system, they know no different. They know this process from beginning to end, and they get to experience it in a really transitional and transformational way. Auckland, why would we go there? Pacifica, as I talked about, they serve 99 different island tribes, made up of those that are listed there, which is impressive, to say the least. But the thing that we've noticed in terms of working with our partners who are there overseas now is that their demographics are ironically very similar to what we have here in Springdale, with the exception of the number of tribes that they serve. And each tribe has its own dialect and its own slant, and its own different way that they approach their particular language. We did visit seven schools while we were there. You can see those listed. It won't have a lot of context for you because you weren't with us on the trip. However, it was really interesting to see the things that were important to them and the things that had value. And I think we share a lot of those same and common values. I mentioned in the video this idea of trust, and how do we get to this idea of trust? And I think that that's one of the things that I see that Dr. Rollins does a great job, is allowing us to go and have these experiences and then come back and say, "Okay, what are you going to do with this now that you've done this? What does it even mean?" And so, as each of those schools listed, it gave us various stepping points into where they were in the innovation process, which was really great for us to see, a really transitional process. These were the themes that I think from our team, even when we came back, we discussed, is this what we think and believe? And the interesting part of this is that big one that leads it all, which is trust. Dr. Rollins having trust in us to be able to know, "This is what our community needs next. This is where our students are now. Learning is changing, students are changing, how do we keep up with that? Cultural inclusion and student agency, and of course, as we've discussed, the personalization of learning." But I was a little dumbfounded when we walked into a first-grade classroom, and I said, "Where are your students?" And the classroom spaces are designed very similar in the format to what we have at Don Tyson School of Innovation, very open format, very open air, and there's multiple classes that are combined into one large learning space. And she said, "Oh, they're in woodworking." So I go downstairs, "Where's woodworking?" She tells me where it is. I go around the corner, and sitting at this table, there are woodworking, and in first grade for the United States of America is tonka, trucks, plastic saws, the wooden hammer with the wooden pegs, that's hammering. We had saws, we had hammers, we had nails, we had it all out. And I just thought, like, "Oh, my gosh." And this little girl turns around with her saw, and she grabs her saw, and she's doing it, and making it happen, and I'm standing right behind her, and she says, "Do you want to turn?" And I was like, "Yes, I would love a turn, of course." And I looked at the teacher, and I said, "Like, oh, my gosh. So do you have any, you know, palpitations at night with the six, you know, six or seven-year-olds running around with these tools and instruments?" And she said, "Oh, well, how would they ever know how to use the tool if we never give it to them?" And I was like, "Touche." So the principal, later on, I talked to the principal, and I said, "Does it ever give you some concern about students engaging with learning in this way in terms of safety and lawsuits? You know, we're in such a litigious concerned society now." And he said, "Absolutely not. We don't subscribe to the United States way of thinking. We do not wrap our children in wool." And I was like, huh. So some really pivotal moments and some things that we took away. We're not going to talk to you very long, we're going to keep it short and sweet, but we just wanted to give you a quick overview. So, Dr. Freeman?
Hey, tomorrow, when you come to George for your school board luncheon, we're going to take you more deeply into some of these concepts. You'll get to see some things that we are already implementing at George. I'd like to talk to you for just a few moments about trust, because it was woven into everything that the students did. Everywhere you went, the students worked everywhere, but there wasn't necessarily a teacher right beside them. The students were in charge of their own learning, and the teachers trusted that the students were doing their tasks. I actually asked one teacher, and I said, "Well, what do you do when you have children that don't do their work?" And she looked at me like I had three eyes. I just went, they went, "They do their work because it's their work and it matters." And I went, "Okay, I've got to figure this out." So, students, one of the examples that I saw at one of the schools was a trust license. And students learn, that means they learn unsupervised in any location, anywhere in the school, with children of across many ages. They can use any device that they choose to learn with, and they were in charge of their own planners and own schedules, and when they had mastered a task, they just checked it off the list. And when the teacher was ready, the teacher checked in with them to see that they had mastered the task. And these were complex tasks. When they wanted a break, they took it at any time. Recess had a certain time, but other than that, they just took breaks with that throughout the day. And then they'd work a little bit, and then you'd get back to work, and nobody told them to. So, another thing I saw was, within trust, was the, can you, how do you forward this? Ah, can you get that for me? Is this one? Ah, science badges. I walked up to a student in an elementary setting, and she was studying astronomy. And she had her selection of anything that she was interested in, but these were badges that she, that the children could earn. And it was a long litany of tasks, I mean, two- and three-step complex tasks that are all applied, that the child could choose to learn. So she was learning astronomy and was moving right along through the system, pulling her resources, just studying away next to another child that was doing math. And so, she said, "Oh," I said, "What are you doing?" She goes, "I'm learning about astronomy. I find it interesting." And I said, "Well, can you show me that?" And sure enough, she pulled up her standards, she showed me where she was, what she was learning, where she was going next, and I think she was probably fourth grade. They don't have grades. A child, like, fourth, year four. Year four. Okay. Thank you.
With, it sounds like less supervision?
No.
No, there was a lot of supervision. It was, the teachers were, the term of call...
Facilitators.
They're guardians.
It's that self-agency piece that I think that we all, we all, the all five of us saw. It's not that they're not supervised, but it's that they are supervised in a different way. So instead of someone, "What are you doing next? What are you doing next?", it's the freedom to say, "You need to be deciding what you need to do next so that you can begin to learn to structure your time, manage your time, learning some of those early skills."
They explicitly taught the children how to manage their time from age five, as soon as they enter, and are entering.
To follow up a little bit on the trust badges, I went to recess, and there were students with badges on, and I said, "What does your badge mean?" She said, "Oh, well, I'm the conflict resolutionist for this playground, and so if someone has a problem, they come to me." And then one was a sports manager, so if someone wasn't...
Sharing the ball.
Yeah, that they would take care of it. Or they would also, like, start programs. They would bring out jump ropes or initiate different games so kids could enjoy it. I thought that was a really great idea. My part is about cultural inclusion. And like Dr. Slocum had said, there were several diverse populations represented in New Zealand that's a lot like our culture here. And so, there was Europeans, there's Maori, which is native New Zealanders, but there's also a lot of the Pacific Island students around that come to New Zealand for an education, Asian students as well. And so, you wonder, how do they all feel that trust? You know, how do they feel part? And that cultural inclusion piece is one of the biggest things that I took away, because the students felt like they belonged there. And one of the things that I learned is, in New Zealand, the schools can pick one of two routes in curriculum. One is a fully immersed Maori experience, where they're learning the language culture all throughout the curriculum, or, secondly, like, a Maori class, really, like, it would just be a class they took, not really their entire day. And so, we saw schools that had the Maori inclusion all day, every day, and then we had schools that just had it as a class, really. One of the things that we noticed, that all the materials, all of the lessons, had culture in it, and were very appreciative of the different cultures. They sang together, they played together, and they had learning experiences designed to make sure that they represented those cultures. And I really take that as personalization on steroids, because we really have that personalization mentality, but my mind was even more open to that when I got to see New Zealand and how they approached theirs.
Okay, so, you have a school. And is the school K through 12?
Some of them were, some of them were ages five through 12.
Okay.
Or five through 16.
Are year?
Yes.
There are no grades, there are years? Okay. You said year one through six?
Yes.
What would the enrollment of that, or do they count the kids?
Yes, about 600.
About 600. Some were smaller because they were brand-new and they were just getting started.
So that would be similar to one of our little...
They were operated differently, though, than our schools. They were, every school was independently operated. The principal was like the CEO of the business, there was no superintendents. There was a board that they were, that was part of, parents and teachers that hired the principal, but after that, the principal pretty much had to take care of everything of the school.
And these are public?
Yes. And I shared some of this with the board at our school board luncheon, but that's really struck me, and it has stayed with me since. And there is a saying in Maori, and I'm not going to try to read that to you, but the English translation is, "What is the most important thing in the world? And I believe it is people, it is people, it is people." And that really resonated with everything we saw. The students were in the center, and the families. And another thing is, on the right there, they're, these words are from a Wakanaki, a proverb, which reminds us, "We are the protectors and nurturers of our next generation. That's what we do every day. That's why we're here." But what it says is, "Take care of our children, take care of what they hear, take care of what they see, take care of how they feel. For how the children grow, so will be the shape of New Zealand."
And this is in Auckland?
Yes.
What's the population? Couple million?
Yes.
I'm just trying to...
Yeah, so did we.
I'm just trying to...
It was incredibly overwhelming experience, so we understand the questions. I know when Dr. Slocum was sharing about the woodworking, and Annette was talking about students working independently without supervision, you, all of your minds, like, were like, "How, what does that look like? How do we get kids to be that way?" As a first-grade teacher, when I'd walk into a room and see students working with tools, my heart was like, "Oh, my gosh." You know, I'm like, "I, this can't happen." But as the week went on, there was this idea of control resonating with me. And I would be on the bus every day, and I sat by one of the ladies from the Office of Innovation, and I kept saying, "I control my kids too much. I'm the one in control. I'm the one working harder than anybody else in the room." And we started looking at this idea of student agency. And it's kind of like trust, it's part of, it's interwoven in everything they do. So they focus on giving those students the power to make control. So not just in the control of where I get to sit in the classroom, but the actual control of what my curriculum is going to look like, and how I'm going to prove to my parents and to my teachers that I have learned this. So students have that power to say, "If this is my standard of learning, here's my evidence." And it was just, it's amazing to see that much power put into their hands. And so, to get them there, the curriculum has evolved over time, and they've actually added these five key components to their curriculum. And what we noticed is that, when we looked at how students were, how the schools were tracking data, and like, what were their focuses for their students as far as academics, it kept coming back to these ideas. Teaching students to manage themselves, teaching students to contribute and participate in all areas, teaching students to own their learning. And I wasn't going to tell the story, but since they did, I feel like I can. So you're asking, "What does that look like?" And I, the first school I went into, there was, we walked into a classroom that was year one, so we were talking kindergarten, first grade, our age. And I saw a student, and I asked, and I knocked on the side, and I said, "What are you doing?" And she goes, "I'm making predictions." And I said, "Awesome." And I'm looking at this classroom environment, and I'm like, "Where is the carpet? Where's the board?" And I said, "Well, will you tell me how you learned how to do this?" And she goes, "Well, my teacher said we're going to make predictions in our story, with our stories." And I said, "So how did you learn it?" And she goes, "Well, we have a resource folder where she's put resources for us to learn, so I can access that folder and learn it." I said, "Well, you showed me that folder." And it had posters and books they could read, and videos. And I said, "Which resource did you use?" She goes, "I used this video." She goes, "My friend over there, she had to use, like, three different videos, because she was struggling with the idea. And this kid over here, he's standing beside me because he's still learning, but I'm here to help him as he goes." So we saw students at a young age having that control of saying, "When I get this concept, I can move on, and I can go to that next level and that next task." And that teacher, her job was then to be, to stand beside them and be that coach, versus being the sage on the stage, the person who is the only model. The students were able to go out there and find the resources. So how does that, where does that start? It starts with teaching them to be able to be self-managing. In one area, they really, we saw this in multiple schools, this is a tool that they use to teach this, and it's the idea of the learning pit. And we were, I was amazed to hear how students would talk about challenges. So, we hear what this student in the bottom, he's saying, "It's too hard, I want to quit." I hear that a lot in my classroom. I see kids who put their heads down, like, "I can't do it. She knows it because she's just smarter than me." And I mean, you hear those same things there, but then you also saw this shift, this mind shift of saying, "Okay, I can't do this, it's hard. I can't do this yet." And then you would see these students start working through it, and they would start working through this pit. So this pit was a tool that they use to teach children how to, "What do I do when I face a challenge?" And it all goes back to the idea of growth mindset. So growth mindset was also at the core, in that we saw that failure was not like, a time to give up, that failure was encouraged. We also saw places where students celebrated failure, and they celebrate, it reminds me of when they say, you know, "I didn't learn, I didn't fail, I just learned ways to not do it, and what I need to do next to change to be successful." So this growth mindset is taught, like, very much in their, in their schools. But I want to go back to the data piece. So we were in a one school, and they had a growth, they had a chart. So it had these charts where it showed in a quadrant, and we use it a lot in our school at George, about looking at growth, achievement versus, what's the other, sorry, I lost it. Growth, yeah, I was right. So the growth versus achievement. Well, they had the same chart, and I was looking at it, and they had their little students' faces posted on it, but they had labeled it, "Connections and Relationships." And so, they, and I, we asked him, "What is this chart that you have here?" And he said, "We track our students not just by academics, but also their personal, their ability to self-manage and the relationships they make." And he said, "If you have a student who doesn't understand math, continuing to throw math at them is not going to work. You have to go back to the core of where their, where the breakdown is, and it usually goes back to their self." So we saw how what we think teaching... So we saw how, what we think teaching the whole child, we saw what it actually can look like and what it, what it should be. So I'll turn it over to Lena.
All right. So we've already talked about personalization of learning tonight, but in New Zealand, we saw personalization of learning, not only by student skill level and interest, but also in what to learn, how to learn, and where to learn. And you've probably seen this picture before. The first shows equality where we give all students the same. And the second shows equity, where if students can reach a goal on their own, then we let them, and if they need more support, then we give it to them for them to reach their goals. But the third shows innovation, where we change the fence so that students are able to meet their goals on their own terms. We talked a little bit about the learning spaces earlier. And everywhere we went in New Zealand, we saw these collaborative learning spaces. And the children were able to make the rooms work for them. If they needed a quiet place to work, then they could create that. And if they needed a place for, for them to work with peers as a group, then they could create that as well. Students were working inside and outside. We even saw like movable walls so that students could, could make those spaces easier. But of course, not every student was ready to make those choices for themselves on where to work and whether they could be with the teacher or not. And so they had to show that they were responsible and trustworthy before they could make those choices. And these spaces were not only physical spaces, but also online. A lot of the schools had blogs where teachers, students, and parents could collaborate together. This is an example of a student inquiry, and this is where students show growth by using their skills, knowledge, and their understanding in a project that they're interested in. But this wasn't just the students, the thing that resonated with me was it was also teachers. And so teachers' PGP's, their growth plans, looked more like action research where they would create an inquiry of their own and work with other teachers to grow and become better educators.
So I'm sure you're wondering what will be our next steps? What does that look like? And so short-term goals are some of the themes that you've heard us talk about, which are building trust, how do we do that in a really purposeful way? And what does that look like for students in Springdale? That cultural awareness, I think we do a phenomenal job of doing that, but I think that we can do a better job of that awareness piece to ensure that all students have that same cultural awareness. The tools to assist students and parents and educators, the learning progressions, one of the things that we've talked a lot about and what we saw in New Zealand is a common tool across all grade bands that the entire district uses, where you put in resources and different things. You can create report cards, you can do different things from that, and that's something that is, that is coming on board quickly for our district, which would be great. Long-term is collaborative teams, student agency happening in curriculum, the personalization of learning and the inquiry-based learning for students and for teachers because it's a dual system, it's duplicit in nature for sure. Yes, sir?
That would be different than our PLCs.
So I think that the next step is taking what we are doing in PLCs and taking it to the next level. I think that we have some very high-functioning PLCs and we've got some PLCs that need additional work. The other is this idea of us having, beginning with this awareness of trust of students and beginning to develop curriculum to be reflective of that. So you might ask, how did the teachers get selected? Because the principals were selected based on data sets. The teachers had to go through an application process that was pretty arduous that they got to do in the summer. It was obviously optional for them to do so, but they had to commit because we talked about that this is a two-year grant process.
So this isn't every school?
No, no. We were allotted to select two schools. It was determined by data as to which two schools those would be. Once we knew who the schools were, that selected the principal. And then once we had the principals, then teachers from that school could apply into, into becoming a potential candidate to go on this journey with us. But in this learning journey, these teachers now come back and they begin to implement some of these practices in their classrooms. So I know that both of these classroom teachers you just heard from have begun that process. We got back and all four of them were chomping at the bit, like, "Let's go, we can do this, let's do it tomorrow." And my, Dr. Rollins will be shocked about this, but my response was, whoa, like, we need a plan, let's get a game plan, let's make sure we're ready for this and we know what we're gonna, what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it.
When I say this isn't every school, I mean every school in Auckland?
Oh, no, sir. I think that you see a large gamut of different schools in Auckland. These are schools that were specifically focused on the personalization of learning and this idea...
A similar example to Tyson, John Tyson School in our district.
Somewhat, yes. I think that the difference is, we were really focused on, this was a grant only for elementary. It was not open to the funders, it was focused based primarily on elementary students. I think that the difference of what we saw there is obviously the age difference. And what does that look like in terms of giving students some freedoms and some trust on the front end to let them begin to build in that self-managing mindset on the front end? And then also, when I approach an obstacle, how do I get out of this? What do I do next? And so I think that, that's, that's very much like Don Tyson's School of Innovation in the sense of the self-management component.
I'm talking about, of all of the year one through six schools in Auckland, they don't, every one of the schools don't operate like this.
Correct.
And the students probably have to apply to get into this school much like they would...
It's typically based on the neighborhood and reflective of what the neighborhood desires. And so what you see happening, and we alluded to it earlier, the principal is the CEO. And so from the perspective of the roles that Dr. Rollins and I feel on this end, my interest was, you know, how do you deal with those, those factors that are coming toward you? And I think that the deficiency on that end is they were amazed that we had school nurses. They could not believe that we had cafeterias that served food to children every day. That was completely foreign to them, that we would have someone that could tend to facilities. They would have risen up and called Jeremy White blessed in New Zealand to have a Jeremy White or a Dr. Cleveland or a Paul Miller to help with technology. It just, they don't have those type of structures. So what we really reflected on is we have so many wonderful things that are happening, which are such great gains for our students and for our district. How do we capitalize on that and then begin to tweak the learning in a different way to where kids are having some different experiences? And so that's kind of where our minds are at this point in terms of beginning this pilot for both George Elementary and for Tyson. So questions that you have?
Did you ever get to talk to any of the parents?
Yes.
That would be my number one thing.
Yes.
With those parents, I would be really curious how their households and what they let their children, if they were bringing them in year one at a SAW at school. At my house, my husband still walks in the kitchen when my 14-year-old has a knife cutting her butt. He's still kind of...
Yes.
So what, you know, it's a mindset that we have here...
Oh, it's completely...
Detrimental to my children that I didn't realize that. But how do we change, I mean, that's where I'd like to...
Well, interesting, we saw kids coming to school, getting out of the car in the morning with no shoes on. They'd walk around all day with no shoes on, inside, outside, running, running around. And immediately, the four supervisors here, we were all out there going, "Oh, let's get everybody's shoes on, we're going to help you, you know, be safe." And they are looking at us like, "I don't have any shoes." And so it's a very different mindset in terms of what it looks like. It's also very open. And so I'm looking for, like, where are the security systems and, you know, how do we keep it, how do we keep everyone contained and safe? And there aren't any. It's very, it's very come and go. And so our, in addition, you have parents who come and they may stay. They hang out on the playground, they, you know, they're walking them in. It's very, it's a very island-type feel, but don't take that as a misconception that learning is not going on. Because the things that these kids could, could enunciate to us and share with us at the ages that they were, were phenomenal. And I keep going back to that comment, how do we give them the experience if we don't give them the tools? And that is just so big. That was really a big idea that I left with. And that's one of the things I came back and shared with Dr. Rollins. And so my challenge is, how do we give teachers the freedoms to be able to give them the tools so that kids can begin to have this idea of trust and self-agency happening within among themselves, which elevates the entire system?
Great job. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Do you want to continue? You ready? So Mr. Tim Smithy, as you know, has transitioned into his new role as the Director and Coordinator of Gifted and Talented Education in Springdale. And he's going to give you a quick, brief overview of next steps for Gifted and Talented.
I'm going to talk to you a little bit about academic competitions. So one of the things that, that I would ask you is, can you tell me the capital of New Zealand? Now, if we were to base it on the information that we've seen so far, we would probably say that it was Auckland. But if you want to be competitive in Quiz Bowl, you're going to definitely know that it's Wellington. So our students definitely would know that sort of thing. So one of the first things I want to talk about is Quiz Bowl. The idea that in recent weeks, we have had teams from, throughout Springdale, compete in our co-op and we've done quite well. Central Junior High won its division and Hellstern Middle School placed third in their division, but we had several teams compete. We actually had more elementary teams compete this time than we've ever had. So we did, we did an amazing job and our students love Quiz Bowl. Now, we also do Quiz Bowl with the AAA sanctioned Quiz Bowl. And we have teams representing the junior highs and the high schools, the School of Innovation also that go to various tournaments throughout the year. Next, we have Odyssey of the Mind. Now, if you've got experience with Springdale, you know that Odyssey of the Mind has been a powerhouse in the state with Odyssey of the Mind. And we have 16 teams currently in, in Springdale competing. So we will have that competition, the regional on March 3rd, followed by the state, and then the state winners will go to world competition. And if you've ever been to world competition, you will know that it's world. You will see delegates or students representing the United States, all 50 states, Canada, other countries, China, everywhere. It's pretty an eye-opening experience. After that, we have National History Day. National History Day is one of those things that, to me, it's a perfect opportunity for student choice and voice because students are able to choose a topic and then the avenue that they want to go through to present that particular topic. If you've ever met Dr. Marion Hendrickson or Thomas Pittman at Central Junior High or Winfield Watson at Lakeside, you know how competitive they can be. When you go to the regionals, one of the things that I enjoyed the most, NWAQ hosts the regionals, is the idea that, you know, we're competitive. Springdale has lots of kids competing. But it's interesting when you see winners who are being announced and they're from Lakeside or they're from Harbor or Central Junior High, wherever they might be, that eventually it gets to the point to where we're going, "Go Springdale!" Because it's past that. You're kind of past the idea of the school competitions. And I really enjoy that. And then the idea that when we go to state competitions, the state competitions are very competitive. If you've ever been, it's completely competitive. But Springdale exceptionally, last year for sure, we did an exceptional job and several students got to progress on to National History Day that's in Maryland, University of Maryland. Now, we call it National History Day, but it's actually kind of like OM. You have students who are coming from all over the globe who are competing. And the competitions there are extremely interesting to me that, like this last year, if a student did a project on Ireland, then they could compete for a, an award to go to Ireland. We actually had the Prime Minister who ended up giving an award and then, you know, supplying tickets and that sort of stuff. And the same thing with Poland, it was kind of, kind of an odd thing. So this year again, they will proceed on to Maryland in June. We also have the stock market game. Now, if you know Springdale, you know how competitive we are with the stock market game. Springdale by far has more teams than any other school district in the state. And this year, we just completed the fall tournament. We have some schools, teams that are doing the year-round tournament. Most did the fall. We had, let me see, we had 289 teams compete from Springdale alone. Now, when you think of a team, a team consists typically of four to five students. And each of those students cost $15 a person. We did it all with grants. Every single student who participated in this, we supplied it with a grant, donors choose grants. So GT teachers and social studies teachers who participate, they all wrote grants. And I think that's pretty phenomenal. And this fall tournament, we just got word that we had a team to win from Young Elementary. Wendy Peters team won from Young Elementary, so she's being recognized tomorrow in Litterock. We also, with GT, we also do something to continue the economics part, we also do something called the Econ Fair. It's third grade. And students create a product. They create a product in their school and then they come to, and last year, we did it at the School of Innovation and will continue to do that this year because they're so hospitable. But, so the students are competing in selling their product that they created. One of the things that they're also doing is they're having to come up with those elevator pitches. They're having to sell their product and come up with a promotion. Other parts with that, we tied in Quiz Bowl to where the kids are in a competition with Quiz Bowl questions related to economics. And we also have to where they're creating a product. So they're given a bag of material, they have 30 minutes, they have to create a product and a plan. So that's, that's one of those things. Competition's good and those kids love studying economics and they like to be competitive. We also, if you remember last week when we were at Walker Elementary, we had a performance from Shakespeare. And Shakespeare is one of those things that we, we did a little bit of a twist from tradition this year. Previously, students who were, fifth grade students who were participating in Shakespeare, they would go to Springdale High and over a two-night period with 10 to 12-minute intervals, they were doing their presentations. We kind of found that by the time you get all of those presentations from all the schools over those two nights, that we were having teams that were performing after nine o'clock. It's kind of difficult when you, you know, you have, want to argue with a, with a parent that your child will be performing when it's past their bedtime. So what we decided to do was, we decided to put Shakespeare back to the schools. So kids would be performing in their schools. The programs would try to create a night of performance, some sort of night of the arts to where maybe the art teacher or the music teacher, whatever it might be, it might be a bigger performance, and trying to build that community within each of the schools. And it seems to be very, very positive. The idea that our typical performances were 10, 12 minutes and like the performance that you saw from Walker, it was 35-minute performance, four different plays, several kids who are participating, gifted kids, but also kids who have a propensity for acting. So, you know, very positive. And actually, it was, it was interesting, the teacher that you saw was probably the most vocal to me about not liking the idea of leaving Springdale High. And now she's, she's definitely sold on the idea that she can make it bigger than it ever was. We also have book bowls, we also have National Spelling Bee that students are just finishing. Dr. Kelly Powell, who is an amazing, she's an elementary social studies TOSA, who works with me an awful lot, who's also getting GT certified. She is the, that leader for National Geography Bee. So we have been going into buildings and participating in National Geography Bee. So that knowledge that Wellington's the capital of New Zealand would also come in handy for those students. We have Science Olympiad that, that students participate within the co-op on science... on science topics, Egg Drop, that sort of thing. And we also have robotics that's very strong in this district. You have any questions?
Thanks.
And Dr. Rollins, by far, he is an amazing person when it comes to economics, very supportive of the economics program, and I appreciate that. You are definitely a leader in the state.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Bridgeforth is here. Yes, she is here with an update for you, an overview on our ESL department.
What an exciting night already. My goodness, it makes me feel so blessed to be a part of this district. I just want to give you a quick overview. Languages, we have 45 different languages that are spoken in the district, and that changes from day to day. We have new students that come in and students that leave daily, but today it's 45. Forty-five percent of our students speak English, 41% Spanish, and 12% speak Marshallese. We have 9,117 English learners today. 12% of those students are at the emerging stage, that's the very beginning stage of learning English. 73% are at the middle stage or the progressing stage, and 15% of our students are proficient, and that is the first marker that allows a student to be considered for exiting. So, 15% of our students are at the proficient level. Another piece of data that I find very interesting is the number and percentage of students who were born in the United States. Of our Hispanic population, 89% of the students were born in the United States, and only 59% of our Marshallese students were born here in our country. We exited 871 students this year, which is very, the number of English learners we exited from our program last year. And then, 33% of our teachers hold an ESL endorsement. We have a number of elementary initiatives that are in place. The first that you've heard much about, English Language Development. All elementary English learners receive 30 minutes of ELD a day, and that is when students are grouped by their proficiency level, and they work on the language that's important for them to move to the next level. Within that initiative, we have done some things that have really improved ELD services to students. First is, we've put a pacing guide in place to make sure that all elementary schools are on the same page, not necessarily on the same day, but with our high level of mobility when a student moves from Westwood to Jones, or to George Elementary, they're able to jump into that ELD class and still continue to work on the language that's necessary. The other important thing that we've done within ELD is, we have begun collecting the unit assessment data. Every six weeks, the students take a unit assessment to see where they are in their language progression, and that has been very interesting data for us to analyze. One other thing we've done at the elementary level is, we have worked with the TOSAs, who are providing the district-level professional development in the reading units of study, to make sure that we are helping teachers scaffold, excuse me, scaffold that instruction. Couple of secondary initiatives in place. ELD for all first, second, and third-year students to the United States. We've also worked with Dr. Smith and her team to provide support to teachers through the Culture of Literacy PD, to make sure that there is support in place for English learners. And then, of course, we have our language academies at Helen Tyson, George Jr., Springdale High, and Harbor High. And then, the last piece I wanted to visit about is our family and community engagement. We have 16 family literacy programs. The second thing that I feel like is very important is that we have built many community partnerships, and honestly, with the purpose of listening to our families and our community members about things that we can do to improve services to our students and families. A few of those partnerships include Tyson Foods, Hispanic Women of Arkansas, Arkansas Coalition of Marshallese, as well as our Marshallese Patron Shelf Meeting. So, we listen to our partners and have put many initiatives in place to help our students and our families. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Harshaw is here, and I think that she's got a special treat for you. Not only an overview and next steps of what she's going to report to you on the district's progress in helping students with special needs, but she has something really special to share.
We have, we are busy. Special education is always busy. Current numbers as of December 1st, we take our December 1st counts of 2017, was 2,289 students that we are currently serving. Like Dr. Bridgeforth and ELL, that changes daily, depending on who moves in and who moves out. We have, we are working with Dr. Morledge and the group at Elementary to help our special education students with the reading units of study, and the support that they can give their students in learning to read, and for the support they can give the teachers in the classrooms for the special education students that they have in their classrooms. One of the huge things we've got coming up, and this is probably the biggest project that we do all year long, is our Transition Fair. And that is March 28th, and it's at Harbor High School. It is for our high school students plus our junior high students. We include eighth and ninth grade, which we started last year. We hadn't done before, but I think the sooner we start talking to them about their potentials in the future and what's coming up with them for careers in college, the better off they're going to be. We have, we call all these places, last year, we had some colleges that participated, University of Arkansas, College of the Ozarks, Bryan University, Nwak, NTI was there. We also have other services that they can access that will help them with post-secondary goals, like Arkansas Rehabilitation Services, the Department for Developmental Disability Services, Arkansas Transition, all sorts of those kind of people that are statewide that come in. We had a Dress for Success tables, which we had, I think Kelly Hayes, whose name's been mentioned a lot tonight, was one of our guys who helped our young men come to the table to learn to tie ties. And Coach Wood, I believe, was also a participant in that. We had several coaches come to help, to help the young men, and we had a lady from Mary Kay come and talk to the girls about makeup and things, and Dr. Christy Smith, who's retired from Springdale Schools, came and showed the girls how to wear scarves and things like that. We, one of the things that we do with the kids when they come in is to try to teach them how to greet someone. We made them actually, before they got their stamp, which they got prizes at the end if they went to every table, but before they got their stamp, they had to greet the people at the table. And if they didn't greet them properly, then they didn't get the stamp. I mean, they made them wait, and it was funny to watch Dr. Smith making the kids wait. We also had nurses who had breakout sessions on CPR. We had the fire department who was there with fire safety. We had our first meeting last week, and we were talking about potentially doing some internet safety things for this year, and how to guard their information and things on the internet, because, you know, kids don't think about things like that. We had life skill sessions for our low cognitive students, which helped them, and Arkansas State Police also did a session for driver's license, and how the students can get their driver's license. So, we're doing a lot of things. We're also preparing for pre-K transition, which covers about 250 meetings a spring. So, we're busy. Our department is busy running around, going from place to place. A couple of things that I wanted to tell you that I thought was kind of cool is, you may have seen this picture, it's been in the newspaper recently. It's a Black Hills Energy ad, and it is one of our classrooms with Susan Giuliani and Julie Tucker at Springdale High School. And what they do is, they use the newspapers in education in their classrooms, and the kids, they had interviewed the kids and talked to the kids, and so they sent them information about what they did with them. And the kids are going home and reading these articles to their parents, who may not be able to read, and so they're studying current events and things like that. So, Black Hills Energy had picked them to kind of be a liaison, and to present the Democrat Gazette with a check. And so, they got their pictures in the paper, and one of the students even designed the t-shirt that all the kids are wearing in his East class, I believe. And their picture's also in the newspapers in education planner that they give out to the schools when they take their newspapers by, when the teachers will tell them how many they need and how many days a week they want it. So, that was pretty cool. And they worked hard, and the kids love it, so I think that's great. One of the other students that I have, and to talk about, is a young man who's at Harbor High School this year. He's a member of the wrestling team, and I think I had told, I don't remember where we were, but I said, "This is what I miss about not being in the building and not being in the classroom. I was invited to go to a wrestling match, and I had never been to a wrestling match in my life, ever." So, that was interesting. Well, while I was there, the father of the young man that I went to see informed me that his son was participating in a legacy bank, Benton County, startup junkie competition. And they go, and they pitch their ideas to startup junkie. And this young man had some issues last year, had quite a few issues last year, and the year before that, and the year before that. So, I said, "Really?" And I said, "Well, what's the deal?" And he told me, he said, "You know, he has an idea. This is what he wants to do. He wants to bake cupcakes." And it all started with him baking a cake for his mother's, for his mother for Mother's Day, which I saw the picture, and it's a pretty fancy cake. I don't do fancy baking at all. I'm just happy if it comes out non-burned. So, he invited me to that, but I didn't get to go. But the young man won $1,000 because he got the People's Choice Award. And so, there's been pictures all over the place with him, and this, you know, big old publisher's clearinghouse looking check for the $1,000. So, he and his father have started the business, and the business is indescribable cupcakes. And you guys have napkins in front of you, and the father has brought us some of their cupcakes. So, that is for you all.
Wow.
And I can smell the peanut butter just from outside the container, so they're great. And the other thing, which, like I said, we, Dr. Slougham told me I had three minutes, so I could talk all night about everything we're doing. The other thing that I would like to mention to you all, some of you have been there, I know Ms. McFetris has, and I think Mr. Ombi has been by. We moved into a new building over the summer, and I haven't talked to you all since we moved into that new building. I know that Ms. McFetris can tell you that it looks very different than it did when she was there, but we're loving the new building. We got our last piece of what we needed, which was our Promethean Board for our conference room. We got it up today. So, if anybody would want to come by and see and take a tour, we would be glad to give you a tour, because we are ready now. And I have wonderful, I call them roommates, with Coach Stellic and Coach Debusk and their girls, and then Rick Schaefer and Amy, Amy, Amanda, who's Amy? I don't know. And then, Trent Jones is behind us. Trent and his guys are behind us with their kiddos. So, we have a good time. We laugh a lot, but we love our new building, so we appreciate that, too.
That's great, Tara. Thank you.
Thank you.
And right on cue, he's already up. He's got that East mindset. He is the coordinator of our East programs in Springdale, and he is also the one who helps kick off different programs as they begin and become from mindset to bring them to inception. So, Mr. House?
My handout's not as good as Tara's. It's not a cupcake, and I'm hoping she saved me one. Just real quickly, so much tonight, we've been hearing about personalization of learning and career readiness, and I cannot think of another program that speaks so much to that as East does, in terms of providing opportunities for our students to follow their passions, to get those skills. They're going to help them be successful in college and in the career workplace. And I want to thank the board and Dr. Rollins for your leadership in growing Springdale into being just the preeminent East program in the nation. And I have conversations with Mr. Dozier at East, and I'm a competitive kind of guy, so I'm always asking, I was like, "Are we still in first place? We got the most programs. We got the best programs." And we're back and forth with Pulaski County quite a bit in terms of number of programs, but every time he tells me, he says, "Jason, sometimes they'll beat you in the number of programs, but there is no other district that can compete with you guys in terms of the number of quality programs that you have." And so, we're sure proud of that.
That's great.
So, just very quickly, you have these numbers in front of you. We are now serving over 1,500 students through East and 15 separate campuses. All four of our feeder patterns are represented with East programs. We're real proud of that. We are looking to expand. We have applied with East to add programs at four new elementary schools for next year. If all four of those were accepted, we predict our enrollment for next year to be about 2,000 students in East. So, that's really exciting. Recent and upcoming events, again, thank you to Trent and to Kara for letting us participate in the Caroling on the Creek event. That was a tremendous success. Coming up at the beginning of next month, we have students going down to the Leadership Retreat, which is in Little Rock, where those students will work in close conjunction with the East staff themselves to manage and document the upcoming East Conference. The students play a very active role in organizing that event. Eight students from Springdale, eight different campuses are going to be represented. So, real proud of that. We are always, again, a leader in terms of student participation in that event. Conference is coming up March 13th through 15th. It's at the Hot Springs Convention Center. Fifteen programs will be attending. We're sending about 150 students. And if you've not had the chance yet to go, the East Conference rivals any professional conference you've ever attended, and it is absolutely amazing to see the work that those students are doing from lowest elementary grades all the way up through the top of high school. I had the honor last year of serving as one of the judges, and they've invited me back again this year, and it's a tremendous opportunity to go in and interview the students and talk to them closely and deeply about the work that they're doing, and the pride and the ownership that they take in that work. It really is inspiring. So, I encourage you to come down. I gave a lot of information about times, but I realized as I was proofreading this, sitting in the audience, that I forgot the date. The open public events are on Wednesday, the 14th, and we certainly would love for you guys to come down. The conference exhibits are open from 8:30 to 4:00. And for the last two years, and now this will be our third year, we have started a tradition of bringing all of the East, Springdale East programs together and holding a banquet, so that we all get a chance to just break bread together and collaborate a little bit over a meal. I would love for any of y'all to come down. That's going to be at the Hotel Hot Springs, where we're all staying together from about 4:30 to 6:00 on that Wednesday. And then, the big East Conference Gala event, their light and sound show and awards banquet or award ceremony is from 7:00 to 9:00 that same evening. So, we would sure love for you to come. If you'd like to attend the banquet or the gala, if you would please shoot me an email or call me, so that I can make sure we have tickets for you. We'd be happy to have you there. Some East Night Out dates that are coming up, we've talked about those before, and I won't go into all of this, because we've got some East programs that are coming and share some specific examples of their projects. But there is just amazing work happening throughout our district with these programs, and it is 100% owned by these kids. They are finding something they're passionate about. They are building those partnerships in the community, and they are solving problems that are impactful on our society, and we're just so proud of them. So, that's really all I've got. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you guys have any.
Any chance of ever getting the conference up here, or have we?
I love that idea. I think one of the challenges, you know, they had to move it out of Little Rock, because Little Rock didn't have any place that was big enough to hold the number of students that are attending. So, part of the East bylaws is they require every active program must attend, and they're in 200-plus schools now across the nation. And I don't want to misquote the number, but I mean, I would, I would say we're probably 5,000 participants or more, just in terms of students and facilitators that are there. So, I think it's a great idea, though. We may just find a spot for it.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Good evening. If I could have Ms. Turley come forward, please? As you know, Springdale High School is one of five high schools in the state of Arkansas that has an International Black Laureate Program, and tonight, she's here to just give you a little background about the program, and also to celebrate some amazing individuals that have gone through the program and are now graduates of Springdale High School. So, Ms. Turley?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Smith, Board, and Dr. Rollins. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity. In the past, we've held this opportunity. In the past, we've held this in August, but this year, we've waited till January, and now we have our graduates having finished their first semester of school away from Springdale. And so we're thrilled to have them here. As they're coming down, we have eight of our 14 graduates, as y'all will come down. I have given you a flyer, and I just, I think it's really impressive. The colored side with the logos are the universities where we have had students to graduate. They've received their degrees from those universities. And on the backside, I tell them, "I will put your university logo there once you've graduated," but this is where they're attending, some students have attended and are attending. So we, as I said, we had 14 graduates out of our class of 33 students last year. We have 29 seniors that will be testing in May. We have 22 juniors. We, because it's a two-year program, we're still kind of promoting to our sophomores to encourage them, but we think we'll have about 25 finalize with that. And currently, freshmen, we've got about 15 that have signed on board with this program. The International Baccalaureate Diploma Program goes along with what we've seen already tonight with the personalization of learning. But before I give them a little piece of, a token for hanging out here all night with us, bless you all. Y'all have been patient with me already. I did want, this is one of our students who's here. She had not had a chance to pick up, but this is the diploma that they're actually trying to earn, in addition to the Springdale High School diploma. Those come in in September, so as they trickle into the office for a visit, I give them their diploma. So this is actually Brittany's diploma. We had, as I said, 14. We have six students not here, but I do want to recognize them, give them name and what, where they're attending school. It's Berenice Alcala. She's at Northwest Arkansas Community College. Evelyn Dia, she's at Southern Adventist University in Nashville, Tennessee. Carol Medina is at the University of Southern California. Simi Sukala stopped by yesterday and flew out today to Washington, DC. She's at Georgetown University. And she gave me permission to tell you she earned a 4.0 as a first-year student at Georgetown. I was so thrilled. I said, "Please let me tell them that." And she said, "You can." Stephanie Trejo Corona, she is at Rice University. And then we, the other young man who was not able to attend was Zialteal Zunigaanya. He attends Welch College in Gallatin, Tennessee. But our stars who are here tonight, Mr. James, since you're our head of school, because that's kind of what I think they call them in New Zealand, are heads of school, but he's not the CEO, Dr. Rollins.
They don't have those.
That's right. Will you help me?
Absolutely.
All right. So our first is Rogelio Canoa, and I asked them to wear, if they could, if they wanted to, their university. He attends the University of Arkansas. And of course, I gave that, the list to you, didn't I? Okay. Jared Kanonago is also from the University of Arkansas, attending there. Brittany Chu is at Hendrix College. Grace Cooper is at Northwest Arkansas Community College. Had a change in plans, am I correct, Grace, in the middle of the summer? So she's there studying political science. And then she will be deciding where she's going to transfer to, to pursue the rest of her education. Melissa Corvira, she's at the U of A, University of Arkansas. I have Diana Lobaton. You met her last year in the spring. You'll notice she's got her Emory University t-shirt on. Linty Palmer, she's at the University of Arkansas as well. So we send most of our young people to our universities, but we do send them all about. And then last but not least, certainly, is Ryan Whitaker, and he is attending Arkansas Tech University. So these are our students who earned the International Baccalaureate Diploma and where they're going to school. But I do need, I would be remiss. In the audience is Mary Catherine Whitaker, Ryan's sister, who also received the International Baccalaureate Diploma. Mary Catherine Whitaker. And she will be graduating this May.
Yeah, I'm graduating May with a Bachelor of Medicine in Public Relations.
And going on to law school. You've been accepted to law school?
Yes, you're going to have the interview next week.
That's great.
So, thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Curly.
Good job, y'all.
All right, thank you.
I would also be remiss if I didn't give Ms. Turley a kudos. She's part of Ivy since its inception, and I know, I think she said 2002, and 2005 was the first group of students, so pretty amazing. So if now I could have Pablo Manon come forward, please. This is a great accomplishment for him. He was selected, and I'm going to try to get this whole mouthful, but he was selected as the Arkansas delegate for the Wimfeld Rockefeller, no, sorry, Randolph Hearst, sorry, Foundation of the United States Senate Youth Program. And so two students from each state are selected to participate in a week-long event in Washington. And during that time, they're going to hear major policies addressed by senators, cabinet members, officials from the Department of State, and the Department of Defense, and directors of other federal agencies. They will also participate in meetings with the President and a Justice of the United States Supreme Court. And in addition to that, there was a $10,000 scholarship. So we are very excited to give him the mic.
Great job.
So just to tell you a little bit about the application process and what this program is about, I found out from my school announcements, I think the very first week of school, they posted a memo from the Arkansas Department of Education promoting this program. And in order to apply, you had to be someone that was interested in pursuing a career in public service. But besides just having a certain GPA requirement and being an involved student, you also had to be a officer of a certain school activity at your school. And there were three options, either student council, NHS, or a class council officer. And you need to have approval by your principal in order to apply for this program. So to begin, it was already selective to all the applicants. It only allowed a certain amount of students to apply. And I had to write an essay about what I saw, what I thought were important qualities for leadership in our United States Congress, and what I thought was important in our leadership in the government. And I applied in early September, just thinking, "I'll do this. It's a great opportunity. It's a great scholarship, and it would be incredible if I got to have it," not really thinking that I would advance much further than that. But in November, I was notified, Dr. Brackett called me to his office and told me that I was one of seven semifinalists that was selected for the state of Arkansas, and that I had to go down to Little Rock for an interview, as well as take a four-hour-long political science exam, which, that was certainly challenging. I do take AP Government, but this was a lot harder. And after the political science exam, I was not too certain I did too great, because it asked very selective questions, such as multiple choice questions, asking you which of these senators did not graduate from this particular university, or which one of these women senators did not serve in this particular term. So definitely questions I would not have known simply from my regular history courses. But then in early December, I was notified after my interview process that I was one of the two representatives that was selected for the state of Arkansas, and I will be attending in March for this program. And I will get the opportunity to go along with 104 other students and just get to meet all these incredible people in the government and really get to experience everything up close, which I'm really excited about.
Have you been to Washington, DC before?
I actually have two times before. One time was in eighth grade with the Williamsburg program that our school system does. And last year, I also had the opportunity to go with the program to the presidential inauguration for a week. So I did get the opportunity to be there for that ceremony. But I'd never been to the White House.
Were you in the picture?
I was not in the picture, no.
The ground picture?
Oh, yes, in the ground picture, yes. I was one of those, one of the crowd.
What do you plan to do after high school?
I plan on going to college. I'm still unsure exactly where I want to go. I submitted a lot of my applications over the break. I've done 12 applications to universities so far. I've only heard back from one. The rest I'll be hearing in a couple of weeks, and most of them will actually be responding till April. But political sciences, I think most likely will all be planning on studying. But I also plan on probably studying business and a couple of other things. Just, I just want to learn as much as I possibly can in college.
What can you do as a degree in political science?
Well, I can either go into law school, which is what usually prepares you, it's usually one of the careers and degrees that prepares you for law school, or you can go straight into politics if you want. But it also really informs you about our democratic system and our government system, and just understand how it works and ways to improve it, which I think is very important. For someone like me that's interested in public service, I think it's a great thing to know.
The reason I ask, when I was a freshman, my major was political science, and I never could figure out what to do with your science. But you have figured that out.
Do you know who the other person that's at law?
Yes. Her name is Cecilia Kret, and she's actually someone I'd met previously in debate tournaments and competitions. So I actually knew a couple of the semifinalists just through Boy State and debate and a couple of these activities.
So is it spring break, or is it a week, just a week out of school?
It's, I'll be missing a week of school, but I'll be able to catch up.
Oh, I'm sure. You're worried.
Yes. But it'll be March 3rd through March 10th, so it'll be that week in particular.
I'm just interested in seeing the test, because I've never, think in the, how many years I've known you, I've never heard you say something with that hard. And so you always seem to, so you must have been the crazy part.
Yes.
Like, you must have done really well anyway, so congratulations. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're very proud of you, Pavel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think his parents are here, right?
Yes.
I missed recognizing them on the previous.
Yes, if you guys would like to stand up, please. And just to reiterate, he does get a $10,000 scholarship. And I know he mentioned something about being able to make it up, but I just want to make sure I get the list of your classes that you're currently in. Are you in AP Calculus?
AP Calculus.
BC, right?
BC.
Statistics?
Yes.
He's AP Language, AP US Government and Politics?
Yes.
Yes, and some other things. So those are just a full load of classes that he'll be making up when he gets back. So we're very, very proud of him. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. Thank you, thank you. If you look at the pages 55 through 57, you're going to see a great article about Sonora Middle School's East program. It's really something you need to read through. It really highlights the students that we're going to have tonight. But if I could have Mr. Ratchford from Sonora Middle School come forward, he's going to have three of his students, and he's going to present a little bit about the article.
Good evening, everybody. As Mr. House said earlier, we have some pretty incredible things going on in East. I couldn't be more proud to be a part of it. And I have three of my all-stars here with me tonight. As you can see from the article, they were featured in several publications. They first were picked up by the Democratic Gazette, and from there, it spread pretty quickly. They were featured in over half of the states in the education section of their major publications. Then they were picked up by the US News for their work. And I'm pretty proud of them and the work that they're doing, as well as, I mean, all of our kids are doing incredible things. They put together a little pamphlet for you that I'll put over by the door if you want to grab when you leave. It features some of the other highlights of our year, including we won a national logo competition, as well as a $10,000 grant to build a signing, a robot that will sign language and teach others sign language. So we have some pretty cool things going on. But I want to invite Alyssa Wilson, Adam Teakle, and Brayden Hamilton over here to give you a little highlight of what their project is about and why they were featured in the news.
Okay, so what our project is pretty much centered around is allowing the elderly, it's okay, allowing the elderly residents of the Rock and Chair Inn to relive some of those favorite memories from the past. And as I was volunteering with them over the past year, I kind of realized they definitely had their most favorite memories that they really liked to share with me at each visit. But then I also noticed that bits and pieces of their story kind of changed over the time they told it. So kind of as a group, we didn't want them to completely lose their memories that they loved telling so much. So we discussed and decided that the best way to remember a memory is to recreate it, and that's pretty much what we did using VR technology.
This was a fun project for all of us. It was exciting to really just be able to go and be and feel how they felt in their memories. To make their memories, we went and went to the area or town that they said they wanted to relive in. And so we went around and we used the 360 camera, and we were going to the places where they said their memories happened. And we would take footage or images of what they liked, or what they remembered, and try to put it into a virtual reality movie, you could say. For example, we had one elderly man that really, he used to be a lecture teacher at the U of A. So we scheduled a trip with a professor at the U of A to go and actually film a lecture classroom. When we finished recording and everything, we went back to the classroom, and we used a program called Adobe Premiere Pro. This program let us make the movie. And then after that, that's where the new, or yeah, the paper picked our project up.
We could have just stopped at the movie, but instead, we read some of the feedback from our clients, clients or residents, and we realized it wasn't exactly what they remembered, because the community has changed so much. So we decided to go to a training based on a, it's called Unreal Engine, and it's a virtual reality-based software, and it will allow us to create our own worlds and make it how we want it. So like, we could, if buildings didn't exist, we could completely take those out of the scene. And, yeah.
Right now, we are actually working on, we're working on making another memory. After, since we have actually, we actually finished one on Unreal, it's a lakeside cabin. And because one of the elderly, another memory that one of the elderly people gave us was that she liked being on the boat and around the water. So that's why we recreated that memory, hope. Any questions?
How do they, so once you've done the movie, how do they look at it for the grid?
Yeah, they use the virtual reality headset to, yeah. We've actually, we post them on YouTube, and that's how we easily move them around. That's one thing about Unreal is it's a little bit harder to move it around, because you have to have the computer with it, monitor.
So cool, guys.
Good job.
Their East Night Out was pretty amazing, and they had a lot of the participants there. So thank you very much. So we are ready for this next group. So on page 58 through 60, you will notice that there's a list of the all- So on page 58 through 60, you will notice that there's a list of the all-region junior high students. And I would like to just take a moment to say, I know these individuals have already been recognized tonight, but as you know, as we've gone through the holidays, our choir directors and assistant directors have put in enormous hours and I just want to recognize these individuals. If they will please, very soon, well, so I just want to recognize them. Ms. Gretchen Watt is not able to be here tonight because they have an eighth grade rising student parent night at Central, but Alan Showalter from Southwest, Ed Gay, who's at Southwest and Central, Rachel Cornett from Lakeside Junior High, Ms. Sudbury from George Junior High, and Mr. Olson from George Junior High and Lakeside Junior High. These people put in amazing hours tonight, is one of them, but they have put in a lot of time and a lot of effort. And the other thing about these individuals is when I reach out to ask them to participate in something, they are so excited to share all the great things they're doing and they also do it so quickly and so willingly. And so I really wanted to acknowledge these individuals. But now I'm going to have them celebrate their students with you. So I know that if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Olson, are you going to give the set? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Tonight, we're here to celebrate the outstanding accomplishments of our Springdale Choral Department. On October 28th, 1,000 students from the Region Five met at Central Junior High to audition for the All-Region Choir. Students completed a blind solo audition on music that they prepared during class before and after school. The judging panel was comprised of three judges who are certified in vocal music, and then students are given scores based upon their musicianship, the knowledge of the music, and the overall beauty of the tone and their diction of the words. Of the 1,000 students who auditioned, we accept the top 300 students as members of the Region Five All-Region Choir. We are proud to announce that of the 300 students, 190 of them were from Springdale Public Schools. That's roughly 63% of the choir was comprised of our students. These students have the opportunity to travel to Alma High School and on November 4th and participate in the All-Region Choir Clinic. And so we are excited to celebrate with them and I'm now going to turn it over to them to tell you about their experiences.
Hello, how are you all tonight? Thank you very much for having us, appreciate it. We're going to talk to you first of all about the process before the tryout. What do you do to get ready for the tryout for All-Region? All-Region auditions happened in late October, as you already told you. That gave us the first nine weeks of school to prepare for these auditions. Our teachers began introducing us to the music very early and use the music refer, reinforce, oh, sorry, use the music to reinforce skills we already knew and to introduce us to new skills we needed. Sectionals are one part of the preparation for All-Region tryouts. Because you are trying out alone, or you're trying out on the voice part, on your voice part only, your voice part, there are sectionals for different, on different days of the week for specific voice parts before and after school. This allows students to focus on just on their, or focus just on their voice part they would be responsible for at the auditions. When preparing for All-Region, it is important that you, is important that you are practicing on your own, of course, because this is how you'll be auditioning alone. So a substantial commitment of time is necessary if you want to become successful in this and what you partake of. To help us on our own, our choir directors put rehearsal tracks or recordings of the songs we trying out, or trying out on for All-Region on Google Classroom. It's like a recording so you can listen to the music like you do in class. That way you can listen to the tracks that you use in class and use them to help you prepare or use them while you prepare outside of school.
Can you introduce yourself as well?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is James Bryce Atwood and I'm at George Junior High.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm Helen Gomez. And so basically what Bryce was talking about was a lot of practice. And as quoted as from a former George student, she would always say, "Practice is experience." And so that really means a lot to me because once you start practicing and you just keep practicing, it's like, it just becomes an experience and with that experience, you can teach other people and it just influence them. And so other things that we did that really helped us to get prepared for All-Region was mock auditions. So they were a really great way for students to experience how the real audition would be and it really helped us prepare and feel more comfortable singing alone. In addition to that, we completed recorded tests so that our teachers would give us feedback individually. This feedback helped us to improve and know where our strengths and weaknesses lie, so we knew what we needed to work on and what we already, what we were already doing well. In an effort to make practicing more fun, our teachers made section rehearsals into a competition. Whoever participated in the most practices won a movie pass. So in addition to wanting to do a good job, the competition motivated us because we knew we were going to be rewarded for the hard work. In conclusion, all of these preparations helped us be better musicians and acquire skills that would, that will help us in the future. We felt confident and prepared for All-Region tryouts. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Skylar Wood and I'm from Central Shantay.
My name's Sam White and I'm a member of Central's advancement choir.
At the end of October, after weeks of rehearsal, we were ready to stand as an individual in the audition room.
Early that morning, over 1,000 students had arrived to receive their audition numbers and wait and wait for their group to be called.
We lined up on the gym floor and were escorted to the warm-up areas where we got to sing through spots one, two, three. After the wait, and the orders were called.
One by one, we entered the classroom draped with a sheet, judges, and we could, the music was on.
Unless the, we had to sing a, make cover bases with the rhythms and the beauty of tone.
And of course, making sure they could understand our words.
At the end of the evening, after all the points were tallied, our directors posted the results.
For many Springdale singers, the day was a success and we were off to the clinic in Alma.
Hi, my name is Nathan Womack and I sing second tenor at Southwest Select Men. The All-Region Clinic at Alma was an amazing experience and a great opportunity, great learning opportunity. I think we had a really great clinician and a great concert at the end of the day. Our clinician was Mr. Michael Crouch from Harrison High School. He had us sing his chosen piece, which was She Is Evening. We might have had a tough time learning the brand-new piece, but it all came together at the fantastic concert. I thought the experience was a once-in-a-lifetime, was once-in-a-lifetime to be able to learn from one of the best directors in the region. I love Mr. Show, but it was great being able to learn in a new way with Mr. Crouch. All in all, we all learned a lot about having a good tone and listening to each other to achieve that. An excellent experience and I can't wait to go back next year.
Hi, my name is Jamie Gashler and I sing first soprano in Southwest Harmony. I was able to make it into the All-Region Clinic in Alma and I thought it was an awesome experience. Our clinician for the day was Ms. Kayla White from Conway Junior High School. She was a fun and energetic person that always seemed to have a positive attitude. The song she picked out as an accomplice to her All-Region piece was called Ruben Ruben, I've Been Thinking. This was a humorous folk song about what it would be like with a world, in a world without men. The performance at the conclusion of our day was spectacular and Ms. White had her way of getting us to smile or make catty faces on stage while keeping the audience curious as to what we were doing. It was truly inspiring experience and I loved being able to sing with others that all had about my same musical talent and I learned to be more confident in my singing. And now my new goal is to get all my friends to come join me again next year.
Good evening, my name is Jorge Ramirez and I am a ninth grader at Lakeside Junior High School and sing bass in the Select Men's Choir. One of my favorite aspects of performing in the All-Region concert was singing on a new stage in front of a large audience with a group of men who love singing as much as I do. My choir directors always remind us that music will take you places and this was an opportunity for our, for our hard work to take us to a new stage. Thank you.
My name is Emily Daniel. I am a ninth grader at Lakeside and sing alto in our Viva Che choir. There are many things I loved about singing in the All-Region concert, but one of them was feeling pride when I looked out into the audience and I saw how happy they were for all of us. This experience will help me in my future because I can understand the big picture of working really hard for not only myself, but for everyone who supports me. I am grateful to be a student in a school district that has such an outstanding choral program and dedication to our fine arts. Thank you.
Are you going to sing?
What about the parents, so if you're here, do you want?
I think the parents who are here, they'll ask.
Well, again, I don't think I can top the folks who are before me, but I'm going to try and share some good news anyway. Every five years, all career and technical programs have to undergo a state technical assistance visit. And for us, that is a very large undertaking. They sent a team of about 20 auditors here to review and they went through equipment, they went to every teacher's classroom, they reviewed Advisory Council knows curriculum, they looked at the overall effectiveness of the program, asked a lot of questions of all of our teachers. And from that, they go back and check in eSchool, they check previous compliance visits, and they come back with an approval status for all of our programs in the district. So this last, in November, they went through 41 different programs of study across the campus, or across the district, rather, and they came back as a universal approval for all of our programs, which is great news.
Very good.
They provided certainly plenty of feedback, that's, that's their job. But only two or three different items that they wanted to see amended and thanks to Mr. White and our maintenance team, all of those issues have now been addressed with the exception of one. And we're continuing to work through that over the course of the semester just due to its size. But overall, a very positive technical assistance visit for all of our programs and we will move on down the road and continue to grow. So a very positive visit from November for us.
Thank you.
Great job. Before, before you leave, give us just a little glimpse of the Northwest Council and at least let us know when they're meeting and so forth. We do have a meeting next week and it's continued conversation and growth of workforce development in the region. A lot of it came from that city futures conversation. What can we do now to increase our, our relevance to regional needs workforce-wise? How can we strengthen partnerships between school and intentional partnership with regional businesses? A lot of emphasis on really trying to streamline the pipeline as our students are coming out of all these different programs and even the career-ready session for tonight, as they go through, what can we do to increase awareness, not just with students, but with parents within our community about the programs that we offer and about the different venues that our students can go. So a lot of good open conversation. And then how can we streamline our workforce development issues to make sure that when our kids graduate, they are the ideal workforce for our region? That's really the gist of where we're going. So it's really good conversation between business industry and our school district.
So you'll have, next year your first senior class or the year after?
At, at school renovation, yes, sir.
Next year, okay.
Yes, sir.
So we may start seeing some acceleration in combination with Springdale High School in Harbor and even Archer.
I think we'll start seeing a lot of overlap. Yes, sir.
With the workforce requests basically from the city and the chamber and.
Absolutely. A lot of crossover between all of the different career programs, but even more so the venues where our kids are going. So that, that intentional partnership development piece is very alive.
But you feel some acceleration then?
Absolutely. I feel a lot of pull from our business community really trying to pull for our kids and I love it, love the excitement around it, right?
It's good, it's good to hear.
Yes, sir. You bet. Thank you. Mr. Ombi, you want to take a break?
Yes.
It's early. Let's stretch.
Couple minutes.
All right.[1508.01]
It's early, isn't it?
Let's stretch.
Couple minutes.
All right.
I feel better than I sound, but yesterday I sounded better than I felt. So, I hope that I'm pushing toward feeling a little better.
Well, if I can get you something, let me know.
Well, thanks, Doc. I appreciate it.
Get you a cup of coffee or a cup of tea?
I'll be all right. We'll push through. Mr. President, Dr. Rollins, if you're ready, I'll...
That's good.
Okay. I know I'm in hyperdrive since Dr. Slocombe was in slowdrive tonight.
Took the word on the street.
That's the word on the street. That's what I heard from Mr. Rollins. All right, well, as you can see from the aspects that are in my area tonight, and forgive me, if I cough, I'm just sorry. I'll just try to push through.
As long as you don't spread it.
Well, I know it's not anything contagious. It's called stupidity in being out in the cold and those kinds of things, but anyway.
It's worth it, wasn't it?
Oh, for sure. I hunted with my 12-year-old and we had a great time, but I'm paying for it now. Okay. SOI Phase Two. We're looking right now at a schedule of trying to make sure that we complete our design phase this month. We have a significant meeting scheduled for this Friday from 8:00 until noon or well after that Dr. Rollins is going to attend along with the instructional team and Dr. Joe Rollins and our architect. So, we're trying to push forward to try to make sure we meet our POR requirements, which is about 169,000 square feet plus the Ag Center, which is anywhere from 30,000 to 50,000 square feet. So, we're working really hard to get those designs nailed down. We think that we can do that by February of 2018, which is just next month. We've got to make sure that we've got this ready for this next month's schedule. We have to submit our technical plat supply, our forms to the city and also to the state. Our construction documents need to be done by June, so we really have a large spring. It's a heavy lift this spring to get everything done, but that's our main timeline. Know that for us to get done and open the following year, we have to start construction by August of 2018, okay? So, bids in June, July. That's our push. So, it's a heavy lift, but we think we can do it. Okay. It's a 12-month construction time. So, that's my major pitch right now for SOI Phase Two. We will have things brought forward to you ASAP. We're still working hard on the design phase. It's what do we have to have, what is it going to look like, what innovative practices can be done there with flexibility in our delivery, and how many students can we hold? We expect that over time, we could even have more than 2,000 students. So, that's our push. Okay. We know that our budget's anywhere between $35 and $40 million. That fluctuates. We try to... We like the 35 a lot better than the 40, but that's our major focus. We're looking at about $165 to $200 a square foot. That's what the range is. Dr. Rollins says 165 or less, so that's our push right there, right, Doc?
There you go.
Yep. Working hard to meet those requirements. The track update. If you've been by the track lately, I've told you the last meeting or so, hey, we're going to try to spray that synthetic track. It's just been too cold. We've had such a cold snap. We have to have 55-degree weather for seven consecutive days in order to spray that synthetic track, so we're trying to find that window. The good thing is, Ballin' Shell, we've extended their contract, but it's at no cost just to wait on that window, so they'll have some people out there ready. And then we're going to look at the forecast all the time to make sure we can get that done, but other than that, our track should be completed, you know, should be completed in June, but it won't due to the weather. As far as the baseball and softball field, January 18th should be our date. I provided you with some pictures and a really good follow-up from Dale Scarborough about what's happening, what's going on with each of his field reports, so that should provide you some good information. Pardon me. Some things that Dr. Rollins has asked me to do, has asked me to put together some information in regard to what it might take to bring these ball fields up to playing conditions. That means lights, concession stand, dugouts, seating, just the whole gamut. There's an email there from Richard Alderman to Dr. Rollins identifying those aspects that would need to be reviewed at both Springdale High and at Harbor to make those playfield ready or play-ready fields, if that makes sense. So, we're looking at that. Keep in mind, we have no budget for that. We have no money for that. Our main thing is a hope and a wish that maybe we have some community partners who might want to come alongside of us and help us do that. So, we're out right now looking to try to find some good quality community partners that have the same vision that Dr. Rollins and the athletic program has in order to develop those fields to play-ready. So, we're working on that. Again, I don't think he's asked for any money to do that because our pockets are a little bit empty, but we're working hard to find a community partner. Do you have anything else to say in that regard, Dr. Rollins?
I'm very optimistic with the progress that's already been made, that we'll have other partners come forward and join us.
Okay. We're trying to put together a budget that might be reasonable and actually obtainable and feasible for that. The Walker and Tyson update, we'll go quickly. I know you've all been through those. Those of you that haven't had an opportunity to, I'm more than happy to take you for a personal tour. They are absolutely beautiful and we're very, very fortunate. Flint Co. has done a remarkable job in pushing those contracts forward, and the work has been really, really good. I think they're going to change the look of the schools and the function, and the main thing is to make sure that the students in the schools have an opportunity to excel. And what are we doing? We're focusing on reading. What the libraries do, they're the heartbeat of the school and focus on reading as well. So, if you don't have any questions on any of those updates, I'll be happy to push forward just a hair. Okay?
So, if we had a partner for the baseball fields right now, they still wouldn't be ready for this spring, would they?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Part of that problem is we're hydroseating the fields and we're also sodding the infield, but it takes a while for that grass to grow.
Okay.
But now the track, I think we could use the track, just couldn't use the infield.
Oh, okay.
So, they're mainly going to use the track this year for practice, and then next year, hopefully, we can try to host a state track meet. That's our hope.
It looks awesome. It looks awesome already.
It's going to be beautiful. Looks great from the road as well.
It does.
Good job.
The bonus that I provided you tonight is there are some pictures of the Central bleachers. We're pretty proud of those. Dr. Rollins just on a whim said, hey, see what you can do, and we did. You know, they cost us about $120,000. Originally, the bid was $150,000 and we said, we can't do that, but we got them off the state contract and they just looked really, really nice, and so we're pleased to upgrade Central a little bit. Last thing we have to do at Central is we'll redo the floor, refinish the floor this summer to make it comparable to the other gym floors that look fantastic in the district. Okay. I think that's all my part in regard to facilities and transportation. We have a really, really nice thing to tell you about. I'm sorry. If you'll look on page 112 through 134, our transportation gentleman, Dana Samples and Kevin Conkin, Kevin's the Assistant Director for Transportation, Dr. Rollins put some restraints parameters for us in regard to how much money we spend and what we can do, and so he's constantly asking us to look at creative ways to, for the money we do spend, to get the big spend for our buck. Well, Kevin Conkin just happened to be talking to a few folks around the state and across the nation in transportation about, are there any grants out there for buses? Well, apparently Detroit Diesel was fined, I don't know how many years ago, for their engines not meeting emission standards. Well, in lieu of paying the government fine, they were, their $14 million was set aside for Thomas Engines, Thomas Buses, to be fed back to school districts in a way to get a huge reduction on the price. So, for example, it's like 36% to 40% on the price of a new bus, but the old buses that were on the road have to be what they call knocked in the head. The engine techs have to be destroyed and the bus is taken out of service. So, we have a lot of old buses that need to be taken out of service, 96 and older. So, when I talked to Dr. Rollins about applying for this opportunity, he said, sure, let's see what we can do, but let's, if we're going to do it, let's get the big buses, the transit buses. I have some extras. People have taken care of me up here, but thank you. So, we applied. We have the opportunity to buy five transit buses that all have air conditioning, that all have the nice wheels and tires and all those extras and seat belts. So, we'll have lap belts on those transit buses, and they'll have all kinds of storage for underneath. So, when we have long trips for athletics, for any activity, whatever, we've got those buses. We give them for, and I think you can see in there, it's $70, $76,000 as opposed to $130,000. That's a significant savings. So, he's approved us to buy five of those. If the program stays around, we're going to try again, so we'll go back to the well if we can this next year.
But those were buses that you were not going to buy, or were they already?
We typically buy two.
You had some buses planned.
Yes. We have a rotation. Typically, we buy about two transit buses every year for our fleet, and we'll buy two or three of the regular route buses and maybe a sped bus or two. This year, we're going to buy five of those out of our budget, and then in the next month or two, we're still going to look at buying a couple of the route buses, but right now, we can't just go out and spend, you know, a tremendous amount of money and not come from somewhere else. Our budget is...
But you already had funds here, Mark, for buses.
Yes.
This is helping you get some better buses.
Absolutely. We basically got two buses for free. That's the way I look at it.
Was it...
That's a good move.
Did any districts lease buses?
Yes. There have been districts in the past that have leased buses, Little Rock, I think.
You say in the past. It's apparently, it's not a...
Well, it happens across the country, but for us, those leased buses, you're just paying money all the time, and you really don't have a lot of control over the bus itself. We've looked at it being an investment to us, and we ride those ponies a long time. We take care of them. We, you know, we're on good paved roads up here and they're not being beaten up on these old mountain roads.
I don't even know why I thought about it. It just...
Well, I mean, you're a business guy. That's why you thought about it.
No.
So, but it just seems to make more sense to us to purchase them. All right. Well, we're proud of our transportation department, Dana Samples and Kevin Conkin and their whole team. Without their extra effort, I wouldn't have had the opportunity to learn about this grant, and I don't think Dr. Rollins would either, the way we run and go and do, so kudos to Dana Samples and Kevin Conkin and the whole transportation team. They saved our district a couple hundred thousand dollars, so I just want to clap for them, you know, in order to do that. They've really helped our kids.
We appreciate it.
I sure will. Thank you, and I apologize for my sickness here. All right.
Get well.
Thank you. Anything else?
We're good. Thanks for all you do, Doc.
I feel like I need a disinfectant wipe before I get too close to this microphone, but I won't stay long. How about that?
Kathy always has it.
I have it. I'll test you. I'll watch.
That's right. You want my Purell?
No, I'm okay. I've been around them all the past two days, so I probably already have it. I have two items for you this evening. The first one is request for out-of-district transfers. There's three students who would like to come into Springdale. Two of them are from Lincoln and one is from Prairie Grove. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'd ask that you approve those out-of-district transfers.
I'd like to mention that we approved the out-of-district transfers.
Second?
We have a motion for Mrs. Cook and a second from Mr. Luttrell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay. The second item is in your packet, and it is a new report this year. If you'll remember in the last legislative session, Act 589 implemented some new requirements as far as school board member training. One of those requirements is that at each January board meeting, the superintendent prepare for presentation a report of the board members' training hours that they had received in the past year and those hours that were able to be carried over from previous years. So, I am happy to report that everybody on our board is in compliance with the training requirements for this year. I do want to point out some additional requirements in this legislation because if any of you were to not be in compliance in future years, there are some consequences. So, the law requires that if a board member does not have the hours by this January meeting when the report is presented, that they've got 30 days to cure the deficit, but during that 30-day time period, you would be suspended from participating in official business until you cured the deficit. So, I hope you remember that in the coming years and get the hours so that the January board meeting report is a happy one and not one where we're having to impose consequences at this legislation.
Now, how long are these hours good, kids?
You get to, you are allowed to carry forward for three years.
I just like the doctors in that part.
Yes, and there is a, right, there is a provision that if you were unable to get your required hours due to a medical condition or military service, there are provisions for that, but otherwise, you're expected to have those hours each year, and it will be reported, just like we have tonight, every January. Does anybody have any questions?
So, these hours don't need to be made up until next January at this time?
You now have between January and December to get six hours for the report that will be next January.
Okay. Calling a spade is paid. I've got some work to do with my training hours. Note to myself.
Right, and so just be mindful of that this year when you see...
Kathy's never achieved.
Stop.
Kathy, can you share?
I wonder if you got...
You get online on the weekends and get hours?
Yeah. Kathy, this might be a good opportunity if you just give them a report about your December experience. You said that was really a good training session.
Oh, my gosh, it was. It was...
And I gave everybody copies of what you brought me, yeah.
Yeah, if you get a chance to look at this, I went to the legal school board training in December, which at the time I thought it was crazy because it was, what, a week before Christmas, but anyways, it was one of the best trainings I had gone to because it went through all these different legal, new changes to the laws and best practices, social media, and then it went through the audit process, and it was really, really informative, so I don't know what else.
It's pretty handy when you can do that at the co-op. That's a nice thing.
It was. It was just at the co-op, so it was pretty close and, yeah.
Very good. We'll try to focus on that as a team next year, for sure.
Yeah, because it was definitely worth the time, definitely.
Are there any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendra. Okay.
Michelle, I wonder if you got...
I got my 3.5 hours before, and I got my hour...
When you were in Little Rock?
Good evening, Board and Dr. Rollins. Tonight for you this evening, I have the two reports that I always present, and the first one is the building projects financial update. You can see that each of those projects are about three-quarters of the way through. So, typically what happens is we get right up to the mark and then it takes forever to make the final payout, so we're nearing that point. Any questions on that?
Kelly, just from the standpoint of summary, and I don't expect you to go into it item by item, but our building fund budget tends to build over the course of the year, but during our conversations today, once we pay off our commitments for the various projects that we have underway, we think we'll have about $14 million in our building fund, which is very close to the baseline that we'd want to keep there, just for good insurance for the district. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
Okay. Good.
Any other questions? The next item that I have for you, Board, is the monthly financials for the month of December. I do want to point out a couple of things if I could. On your revenue report, it's looking exceptionally good, and it's a little too good because there were a couple of items that last year we received in the month of January that this year we got in the month of December, so once again, it's going to be a timing issue, and so next month it'll shore back up, but we did get our final tax settlement in December. Last year, we got it in January. Typically, it does come in December, so last year was unusual, and then we got our, a major portion of our English language learner funding in December. Last year, it came in January. So, between those two items, that was well over $5 million that we received in December that was pushed forward to January last year, so we'll be back in line at the, at next month's report. Overall, our revenue report is looking great. Our expenditure report, we're ahead of where we were this time last year overall. I'll be happy to answer any other specific questions you might have.
I have a motion to accept the financials that was presented.
Second?
There's a motion by Mrs. Kirk and a second by Mrs. McPetrus to accept the monthly financials presented by Mr. Hayes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. I know we have our team of SCA reps here. Ladies, I know you're ready, but come on and share your report. Thank you.
Happy New Year. It's good to be back. We have been working really hard on meeting the needs of the students in Springdale and of our teachers, and one of the things that we got to do over Christmas was we adopted eight families. We worked with the counselors at Bayari and at Turnbow, and we were able to get gifts for those kids for Christmas, so that was wonderful. It was so nice to see, we gathered for our Christmas party and everyone brought their item in, and it was just really nice to know that we were making the difference for those kids for Christmas, so that's one of the things that we have done recently, and also in talking with our teachers, we have found that they are experiencing or having a lot more students who come from a trauma background. And so, Ms. Pearson is offering a training on poverty and trauma and working with children who come from poverty and trauma, and she has had an overwhelming response, so much so that she is doing two training sessions now, and she, we don't have enough room to accommodate the training at our AEA office, so Ms. Cooper at Parson Hills has volunteered to let her use the library there. It's for members and non-members, so we hope that it will help a lot of the teachers in Springdale, give them the tools they need, help with classroom management. When we talk with teachers a lot, that seems to be something that they struggle with, is classroom management, so helping them with classroom management and helping them work with those students who need just a little bit of extra support and love and encouragement. So, we're really excited about that, know it's going to go well. And we're also preparing for the AEA Legislative Conference, which will be at the end of this month in Little Rock, and our AEA president, Kathy Kohler, came to Springdale tonight to talk to our members about that. We'll be sending some members to that, and that will just be with AEA members from across the state and legislators in the state to talk about public education and possible upcoming legislation that could affect public education. So, just being proactive and getting our opinions out there to protect public education and for our students. That's what I have for y'all, and Chris and I realize that it is Arkansas School Board Appreciation Month, so thank you so much for all that you do. Y'all are very dedicated to our students and our teachers, and I appreciate you, and I feel very grateful to be able to work in this school district, so thank you, and you'll have a great one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And happy new year.
Mr. President, that concludes our regular meeting.